Our Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October or August 19th, 2021. It is just past 6:30 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Travis Nay, Lisa Mokavich, Ted, I'm sorry, Ned Hacker, Sue Wilson, Jeremy Lowry, and Jake Pearson. And I am the Chair, Mary Ann Patterson. And from staff, we have Jared Hall, who I think just stepped out, Susan Nixon, Zachary Smallwood, and Bryant Farnsworth is with us in the back. We want to, before I start on the agenda item, I just want to let the public know, Agenda Item Number 7 on our agenda has been postponed. And if you are here for that item, it will be on our next meeting agenda, which is September 2nd. So that will be presented and reviewed at that meeting. So we just want to welcome the public. Thank you for being here. Some etiquette items, just to review really quickly. We would ask that you all would take a moment to just silence your cell phones. And if you do take a call, please step out of the meeting room. When it comes time to make a comment on an agenda item, we would just ask that you, for the public record, come and speak at the podium. And that you would state your name and address before into the microphone, so that we can get your information for the minutes. And we will address that when it comes time to do that. So our first item is approval of minutes from the July 15th meeting. Have all the Commissioners had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
And we noted one slight change in the minutes in the pre-meeting. Do you want to just state those minutes for the change of the public record?
Sure. It was on page 5 in the second paragraph, and it was discussing something that I had said, talking about the neighborhood east of 4800 South, and stating that the neighborhood was already a high-quality neighborhood, and that the project would not, or that the new zoning wouldn't necessarily improve that area.
Yeah, I think that's a good change. Were there any other changes or corrections for these minutes? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 15th, 2021 meeting as revised.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion passes for the minutes. Next, we will move on to conflict of interest. Do any Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No, neither do I. There are no conflicts of interest. Third is our approval of findings of facts. Has everyone had a chance to review the findings of facts for Crack Shack Conditional Use Permit?
Yes.
Any changes or corrections? I mean, okay.
Nope.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the findings of fact for Ted Deetus McNeil Engineering representing Crack Shack to demolish an existing jewelry store and construct a new building for two fast casual restaurants at 6161 South State.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on, we will start our conditional use. Well, first, we have site plan review, Agenda Item Number 4. Hillcrest Junior High Seminary Building. Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, great. We will have our presentation by staff first.
Great. Thank you, Chair Patterson. I appreciate that. As you said, this is site plan review for a new structure in the CD Zone. We have, in the past, just done a site plan review at a staff level, but we've since decided that it's time that we bring them before the Planning Commission for their review. So this is located at 133 East, 5460 South. Approximately here, it's just east of the Hillcrest Junior High. It's probably a bus drop-off, I think. I'm not 100% sure. So it's in an old parking lot that's not used. It looks like it's fenced off and gated from people using it. It is in the CD Zone. Religious structures are permitted use. So this is just purely just reviewing, making sure that it meets all the ordinances. Took a couple photos. Like I said, it's fenced off. It's parking lot seen better days. I think a new structure here with some landscaping and stuff will be a really nice addition. Provided a site plan for you. It does have, I believe, five stalls, five or six stalls, parking stalls, with an ADA van-accessible space. Also included, landscape plan. We are requesting that they add a couple trees, and I think four, five-gallon shrubs, kind of within that first 10 feet of landscaping. So that would be in this location here. It's pretty straightforward. It's a brick and stucco building with a black windows. Or, sorry, not black windows, black-framed windows. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty basic. So staff is recommending approval of this project, subject to the 10 conditions that are on your screen. Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Great. If we could have the applicant come up. And just a reminder, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Justin Kimball. My address is 908 South Monument Park Circle in Salt Lake City, 408.
Thank you for being with us. Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions of approval?
I have not.
Okay.
But I could quickly.
You can look over them really fast. Well, do you think you'll be able to comply? That's what we're looking for. You'll be able to comply with these conditions?
Yes, I don't see any of them that look like they're an issue. Yeah, no, they all look good.
Okay, great. Is there any further information that you would like to present to us this evening?
I think this is known to everybody, but as part of the broader projects for the Murray-Hillcrest subdivision that we've done on both the assisted living and the hotel that are there on State Street, we're doing a land swap with the current seminary building that's there. So that will obviously be shut down, relocating this site, and we'll be, hopefully, in the near future, redeveloping the current seminary site as well. So just wanted to make that clear to everybody as well.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So the, we don't have a real rendering, but more of a black-and-white rendering. I'm wondering why, or if there's a particular reason why it looks so vanilla compared to all of the other nicer-looking seminaries around the region?
Yeah, I probably don't have a great answer for that, other than cost right now. For the land swap that we're doing, it is going to be a pretty basic seminary building that they're getting, just for the cost of what it's going to be to redevelop both sites. The church does still need to sign off on the plan and on the elevations, and so they will have a little bit of say in what ultimately goes in. But that's all we have right now. But it is going to be, just so, in full transparency, it is going to be probably more of a basic structure than other sites that they've done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now, I will open this agenda item up for public comment regarding this. If you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you can do so at the podium. Please state your name and address for the record into the microphone, and keep your thoughts to three minutes. So is there anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item? Okay. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
Can I just make a basic statement?
Yes.
The swap, I think that is actually the absolute best outcome for this project. The fact that they'll get the entire State Street frontage, that really is going to benefit that overall project. So I'm glad that that was able to come to fruition. I know that you wanted to do that a long time ago, but weren't able to do it. So I'm glad you were able to do that.
Any other thoughts or motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the proposed site and architectural plans to allow the construction and operation of a new seminary building at the property addressed 133 East, 5460 South, subject to conditions 1 through 10.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker to approve the proposed site and architectural plans to allow construction and operation of a new seminary building at the property addressed 133 East, 5460 South, and a second by Commissioner Lowry. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Mokavich?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is approved. Good luck with your project. All right. We will move on to our Agenda Item Number 5. Site Plan Approval for Taco Bell Restaurant Located at 6001 South State Street. Is the applicant here this evening? Yeah, okay, great. We'll have our presentation by staff.
Okay, thank you. Drive-through restaurants in the CD Zone are permitted use, but any new structures in the CD Zone require Planning Commission Site Plan Approval. So with that, we're presenting their proposal for a new 2248, 2,248 square foot restaurant with a drive-through. The address is 6001 South State. It's shown on the map here. It's in our CD Zone. The property is currently occupied with a Cafe Train, which is proposed to be demolished, and that a new structure will be constructed on the same site. There is an access easement agreement that has been recorded on the property on the north end, and probably on the south end, both, actually both. And we do have a copy of the access agreement, and there's been a boundary-of-land agreement on the north end of the property. And the city has also received a copy of that. The proposal for the restaurant is just over 2,000 square feet. They will have approximately 40 seats, which require 20 parking stalls, and they are showing 27 on the site, so it's more than what we require. The landscaping will be required, as shown in your staff report. They may need to recalculate the number of trees and shrubs once the property has been reconfigured, because they're going to have to remove some of the portion on the north end. Here are the elevations of the proposed Taco Bell, which is very nice-looking, kind of the newer style. So staff is recommending approval with the seven conditions as outlined. We also sent out notices to everyone within 300 feet, and we did not get any response whatsoever. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. So this is a really auto-centric design. I noticed that there's not really a great way for anybody walking along State Street to get to that restaurant. They have to walk through the drive of the property. I really think, as we know, that these properties have a potential to redevelop over time. It's, we can't keep building for what hasn't worked in the past. We have to find a way to allow pedestrians to move about the city and not worry about automobiles being the only way in. I really would like to see a revised plan for pedestrian access that doesn't allow me, or doesn't make me get out of an automobile to walk into that restaurant.
Okay, because, yeah, the drive-through aisle is on the west side that faces State Street. So, yeah, from State Street, that would not be very accessible.
Well, and I mean, but even if you look at the south end of the project right there, there's an opportunity to take a sidewalk out to State Street. They don't. They dump it right in the middle of the driveway. And I think that we need to consider that people may want to walk here.
True, yeah. Well, I can have the applicant respond, the architect, I believe, is here. The owner is not here, but the architect is representing them. So I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
Yep, that'd be great, thank you.
Can I piggyback that comment? I kind of expected Travis to say something about the walkability there, and I thought about it myself, too. And I just assumed, because it wasn't in our MCCD district where we're really focusing on making our community more walkable, that we weren't going to address it. But now that he brings it up, it isn't too far from Fashion Place Mall, so maybe pedestrians would someday want to walk down there. And it's not too far from residential areas. So it's not that bad of a request to put in, make it a little bit more walkable.
Good comments. So possibly it could be revised. Guess we'll have to see if they're up for that, but it does meet the code, so, for the CD Zone, anyway. Any other questions, or?
Okay. Thank you so much. If we could have the applicant come up and state your name and address into the microphone.
Ryan Naylor, Nichols-Naylor Architects, 10459 South, 1300 West. And in looking at the drawings, you know, I tend to agree with you that that might have been a shortcoming on our site plan, that we could easily incorporate a connection out to the sidewalk on State Street. In actuality, I mean, if you get an accessible route to the public way, it'd probably be required anyways. So I can see adding that as a condition of the approval of adding a connection to State Street. I don't think it'd be very difficult to accomplish. We've reviewed all the other conditions of the approval and don't have any problems with anything mentioning in there, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have questions. So have you, the exit access for that drive-through is probably one car length, maybe two from State Street in the sidewalk that's there already. Is that enough room for you?
Your time out.
I'm just thinking of stacking, coming through the drive-through and others coming out of the parking lot, wanting to make left-hand turns across three lanes of traffic. I'm just looking at that entrance access point, wondering if it's suitable.
You're talking about the outgoing lane on the south end of the property?
Yes.
Yeah, from our experience, that should be plenty on the outgoing lane. Usually, we end up with issues on the incoming lane, and on this one in particular, we have, you know, tons and tons of stacking and, you know, paid attention to try and keep the cars backing up in the drive-through lane from, you know, conflicting with the driveway to the north. So, you know, I don't believe it will be an issue on the south end.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I would open this agenda item for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment about this, you can now come up to the podium.
Zach, is that mic on? Is that mic on?
Hi, John Lilinquist with Lilinquist Salt Lake Company. We actually are the owner of the shopping center where Taco Bell is actually going to lease this parcel from us. So even though we're not the applicant, oh, by the way, address 6995 Union Park Center, Mid Valley, or Cottonwood Heights. So the applicant is actually Taco Bell, but I'm here to just offer any, answer any questions that, you know, the Planning Commission may have outside of Taco Bell, and how it might integrate with the balance of the shopping center, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think that is, because I think that this is an area of potential redevelopment in the future. So if this is maybe the first thing that's going on, yeah, maybe can you speak to, in your future redevelopment of this whole area, how are you anticipating Taco Bell relating to, you know, any changes that come to the site in the future?
So just to the east, there's an existing, you know, strip center that has a few tenants in it. And then we're actually the owners of the old ShopCo building as well. As everyone knows, ShopCo went bankrupt. We've since sorted through that process. We've actually taken that building back now. For a long time, ShopCo or some other people had effective control of the site within the last four to six months, maybe longer than that. Recently, we've kind of reacquired the rights to control what happens there. So we're working on all kinds of different potential options. Obviously, the site's a little bit dated. The Cafe Train building there, they fit into an old Burger King. We, as a developer that have experience with retail, love what, you know, the Taco Bells of the world offer, which is a fresh look, a new, clean building, rather than taking an old building, modifying it. They're planning to scrape the building. We had a lot of dialogue. I don't think the Taco Bell people are here. You know, do you put the building in the same spot, or do you reorient it? We kind of, as a developer, defer to the operator a little bit, because they know what they need to be successful on the site, access and all those things. We look at it through the lens of the balance of the shopping center. In some respects, we play a little bit like the umpire, right? We want to make sure that the flow works, ingress, egress. We've done some cross easements, some modifications to the site. It took quite a while, but we really are looking for this as the start of a refresh of the whole site. How fast that's going to happen, it's hard to say. But you bring in a good operator like Taco Bell that generates quite a bit of traffic. They had a store down the street that was quite successful. Probably, most likely prompted them to find something in the area to capture their clients or their customers. We like the fact that Taco Bell has put a lot of thought into this. The drive-throughs, the building, everything has been, has kind of gone through, you know, a washing machine, so to speak, with us, too, to make sure that this isn't just catering to Taco Bell, but it fits in with what we're trying to do long-term. So we're in favor of what they're looking for. We haven't had a lot of control on the site. We've let Taco Bell kind of dictate that. But it fits within what we think is the start of improving the whole area. You know, some refresh, obviously, the ShopCo needs to be dealt with. It's not good to have a big vacant store like that. What that ends up being, there's a lot of potential suitors out there that are contacting us. We've had some dialogue with staff at the city about just different things. But I can answer any other questions. If that gives kind of an overview to help what we are envisioning for Taco Bell as the start of something better. And I think their building is a little modern look. Sometimes, we, as a developer, want to make sure that that's compatible with the architecture and stuff. It gets to be a little bit tricky, because you want to let Taco Bell do what they think they can thrive with. And the plans they submitted are kind of their updated model of what they're finding is very successful, especially post-COVID, too. COVID's affected a lot of the fast-food world, a lot of drive-through stuff as opposed to sit-down. And I think they've thought through this plan pretty well.
I would not be sad if ShopCo turned into a Hobby Lobby or some other high-revenue generating business.
Yeah, we recognize it's a big box that needs to be dealt with. And, you know, obviously, we want to do something sooner rather than later. So we're sifting through a lot of different.
My kids voted for Xanadu, complete with Olivia Newton-John and Gene Kelly. But, yeah, some kind of big-box retailer that would bring in some, you know, good foot traffic and revenue. And I'm sure that's what you want, too, as a developer.
Yeah. And, you know, we have experience in other cities with other developments. That's kind of our expertise. So we're looking to do something that's good. And I think Taco Bell refreshes a little bit what's been, not that Cafe Train was a bad operator, we liked them, but that building, a new, brand-new building there sets the tone for what's to come, in our opinion. Any other questions I can answer? I wasn't coming to talk, but I just thought I'd come up and add additional insight into what's expanding beyond just this little Taco Bell parcel.
Any other questions?
I, you know, I appreciate you coming. It's nice to have that added insight. Also, just throwing this suggestion out there. Hopefully, part of your insight is walkability, right? We have no idea what's happening in the future, what your project will.
Sorry, walkability?
Yeah, we don't know what the project ultimately will be, but hopefully, you're considering walkability.
Yeah, we will. And again, I can't address specifically this site plan, because we've left that to Taco Bell as the tenant to drive that. But certainly, that goes into a lot of the decision-making. You bet.
Yeah, I want to commend you for coming in and chatting with us. This is obviously a part of the city that, you know, we'd love to see some redevelopment happen with. You know, currently, you have a building in ShopCo that was probably built in the '70s, early '80s, and then you have another batch that were built, probably 10, 15 years later. And now you have this in generations. You know, I think what would be, what we would probably love to see, and I think one of the, so, one of the challenges, I think, that you'll have is what Taco Bell is going to do. You know, how is that going to fit into an overall redevelopment? And how is that going to set the tone for it? And those will be some questions you'll get next time, that, you know, how does this, how does this look for walkability? How does this look for aesthetics? How does this tie in? So I think these are decisions that, as you make for this small part of it, will probably carry forward into the future a little bit.
Sure. Appreciate that feedback. Just, you know, for reference, we actually own the stuff across the street as well. So we inherited an old Toys R Us, that Toys R Us went bankrupt. Old building, it was built with a Toys R Us and a Kids R Us. The Scandinavian furniture guys kind of inherited that. And we feel like they've, that's the kind of thing we're looking for, is come in, fresh it up, bring in just a new vibrancy to the area. Because, you know, it's just newer stuff, as the trends continue. And both sides of the street, we're kind of looking to do the same thing. Because it is good prop, you know, it's a great part of the city. Murray City is incredible to, you know, over, the history's been, we've had a good working relationship. And obviously, we want to refresh it with that same thing in mind.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks for being with us. Any other comments for this agenda item? Okay, I will close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I will make a motion that the Planning Commission grants site plan approval for the proposed Taco Bell restaurant with drive-through for the property address 6001 South State Street, subject to conditions 1 through 7, with the addition of a condition 8 that says that they will include pedestrian site access to State Street.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Nay, and a second by Commissioner Hacker to grant site plan approval for the proposed Taco Bell restaurant with drive-through access for the property address 6001 South State Street, subject to the seven conditions with the addition of an eighth condition. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mokavich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So motion is approved, and good luck with your project. I know people are excited to have Taco Bell back in the city. Okay. Agenda Item Number 6, a Conditional Use Permit and Design Review for Murray Square. Is the applicant here this evening? Oh, great. We'll, yep, on to the next.
Thank you. This is a, this is an application that's a little unique among our other applications tonight, because it's been partially considered, at least in the past, as part of the Murray Square development. We first saw that as a commission, as the Van Winkle Crossing, mixed-use development where the old Kmart building was. Speaking of empty big boxes, up on 900 East. As you recall, and I'll just briefly go over this so that we can move through the slides more quickly. This mixed-use development site is largely residential on the west portion, and then the commercial pads, the commercial part of it, were all to be constructed out of 900 East, about 21,000 square feet altogether. This is in our mixed-use zone, the formerly mixed-use zone that we recently updated to be called the Murray Central Mixed Juice Zone. But it was what was applied to this property back in 2019. So you can see the property here in the middle, the Ivy Place Shopping Center to the south, and some storage units to the north. The site plan for the pad building, this is a 4,800-square-foot spec building for three tenants, for potentially three tenants. It does include a drive-through. Our main concerns with the drive-through were the kinds of things we've been talking about in the previous application for walkability and integration with the larger site. And as you can see, you can see sort of the components of the larger site. This building here is a residential building, the first phase of the residential portion, and it connects well to the pad site. There are some concerns, there were always concerns with drive-throughs in 9th East and the kind of things that those do. But we feel like we're addressing those as well as we can. So there's drive-by traffic and visibility for 9th East, but then good pedestrian connections from 9th East and from that good, solid mixed-juice public improvement that we do on 900 East, down onto the project and into the site as we can. We really wanted to make sure there were strong connections pedestrian-wise. connections pedestrian wise from the project itself to these pad sites. And that's been kept in in check here very well. There are 50 parking stalls on the site. This building doesn't generate a need for 50 parking stalls. But again, these are part of the larger project. There's a future spec building coming on a pad site to the north. As we go forward, they'll they'll build out in that phase. Talking about the phasing for the project, that residential that's under construction right now is phase one. So there are a bunch of units coming up. And as those get completed, these commercial pads become more and more interesting to to potential tenants. And so the commercial phase is its own individual thing. I wanted to talk about real quickly, we called that in the staff report, the connections for the crosswalks across here. They're probably part of phase one. They're included in the master site plan. We'd like to see them on the site plan that comes with the building permits. So that's one of the conditions we put in. We know they're planned already. They're actually better aligned in this new pad site. It's been slightly shifted. We'll look at that in just a second here. You can see the master site plan on the right. And they show that crosswalk there. This this entrance or exit from the parking structure for the residential has been lined up better with the pad site. And so we can actually just anticipate that this crosswalk would go in. But we want to see that on the site plans that accompany building permits. As you can see, that's that's really the principal difference. The this main road coming in, the private access road that goes to the subdivision to the west stays intact. That was a question that got asked in the in the pre-meeting. I want to make sure that's clear for the public. That's being being maintained open during construction as well. So there's a lot of a lot of work goes into keeping that open during this time period. So we're happy that the developers have been willing to work with us on that as we go. We are looking at landscaping on the site. It was part of the larger landscaping plan in the development. And it's still meeting those those same plans. It will meet the the requirements of chapter 1768 for landscaping. As you can see, the building itself, again, for three potential tenants, there's some mix of roof lines and some architecture, some different materials. We feel like this all will look good for the for the larger project. And just a couple of things to end the staff presentation. You can see this is the area where the project will be built. This is the main entrance, that 4680 South Street that privately goes through and connects to that west neighborhood. This is the area where that pad site would would exist. And you can see the part that's under construction. Again, like the question was asked in pre-meeting, this is the construction for that large central residential building with the big parking structure in the middle of it. And the pad site, you're looking basically from the pad site that will get constructed toward where the residential buildings will be. We are recommending approval of this of this site. It is a little bit unique in terms of approvals as well. In mixed-use zoning, in the previous mixed-use zone and in the new Murray Central Mixed-Use Zone, anything with a drive-through is conditional. So we have a conditional use permit approval to allow the drive-through as part of it. It was kind of pre-considered with the with the master site plan because it's also only allowed to have that drive-through between it, between the building and the street if it's part of the master site plan. And then design review approval is is the site plan approval name for this. So it does need those two different approvals. They can be done in one motion. Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, thanks.
All right. If we could have the applicant come back up and state your name and address for the record.
Justin Kimball, 908 South Monument Park Circle, Salt Lake City.
Great. Have you had an opportunity to review the eight conditions?
I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
We will.
Great. Is there any additional information you would like to give us about this application?
I don't think so. I think Jared provided a very thorough review. So happy to answer any questions.
Great. Are there questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will open this item up for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on this agenda item, you can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Can we discuss a just a little bit? I guess it is for the staff, Jared. Two of the, so we have four pad sites that we're suggesting commercial up along 900 East. Two of them have a drive-through.
Yeah, the north and south ends. And that's that's subject to change. I want to point out, I should I should point out rather, we did not in the in the memorandum, that's such a hard phrase to say, in the memorandum of understanding. We did not tie them to specific things. These were sort of illustrative. It's kind of it's kind of illustrative of what they anticipate they want to do. But that could that could change. We didn't tie them to anything. We just said as pad sites develop, as the commercial develops, you'll bring it to us for specific design review approval and conditional uses as necessary, to leave that commercial phase open and let it develop as it needed to, as long as it was integrated and those main components of connecting it to the residential stay in place. But yeah, two of they're anticipating probably wanting two drive-throughs at the north and south ends.
You know, I have to admit that the city itself has made us aware, or me, probably all this of some of the things that we're aware of, like walkability in a mixed-use area. And so I'm kind of hounding the teacher. But
That's okay.
It makes us look, I just like to talk about, so everyone knows we're thinking it through.
Yeah.
And I look at that site and I think of what you know what Commissioner Nae was saying, I mean, no, Nae's on the same, sorry. Ned was saying earlier about exiting the drive-through. And I picture our commercial sites across from IMC and exiting Starbucks. You come out that exit and you just can't get out, especially during lunch. And I want to make sure we try addresses, make sure we don't cause that to happen again. We really want people walking, right? So this second pad site, exiting that pad site, is that going to be congested? Because that's an entrance that they're exiting into?
That's a that's a good question. And I'll probably want to take a look at it as we go forward to the to the second pad. Absolutely. But drive-throughs are, they're particularly difficult in mixed-use areas because you want to be in mixed-use areas in the West where there are a lot of cars. 900 West is a very heavily trafficked vehicular corridor. That's going to shift as time goes forward. But for the for the foreseeable future, there'll be a lot of traffic there. And they want to draw some of that traffic in. Our hope is to not, what I don't want us to do is ever completely ignore that there are pedestrians on this site. And we hope that people looking down out of those apartments feel connected to these restaurants. And not that they should all be restaurants. I'm just that's I'm hungry. But it's, you know, as these go forward, we want to keep that very much in the front of our minds. But I'm not sure how to address it on the north end one yet because we haven't actually seen it come through. But that's a good point. And we should probably look at it as we go forward.
And I know that project isn't up for discussion today. I just felt it's fair to say that because I don't I don't want to approve this one and later come back and say, I don't want to approve the second driving because what we're creating with two. So might as well think about it.
And I think as long as the drive-throughs are are approached in that manner, that we we can we can handle them on the site as long as they're not impinging on the the overall walkability and the connectedness of the site. And I think we're okay. Probably more than two I would be concerned about. The two on the north and south ends, I'm okay with. If every single building coming in, I don't we might start to have issues with too many, too many crossings for pedestrians. But keeping them located in appropriate places and making sure we're cognizant of them, and how people cross them, how you sign them, how you mark them, and where you place them is the most critical. And I think we can, we can deal with that as we go forward. This one's done very well for that, as long as we're looking at the interior and how people are moving around. They should be safe and not in the traffic too much. That's what you really want to worry about where they're coming out for pedestrians, for stacking, et cetera, too, as well. But
Along that same thought process, you know, again, I don't do this for a living. So you're better at this than I am. So but it looks like the north, yes, north crosswalk is better developed with trees and wider, more inviting, maybe a fountain or a circle there. And then the the south crosswalk, I wonder if it's enticing enough, if it's something we should be trying to encourage to be more robust.
Go back one, go back one more. That's so on the north end, this is a this is a
Not on that slide.
What you're seeing on this end is is simply a connection from the building to the to the pad sites, call it a basic connection. The north end one, the one that's a little further north, is actually the central feature of the whole project. So you have the area that's going to that's going to have utilities in it for food trucks to come into a kind of a big, a larger kind of pedestrian gathering area. So it is more developed, absolutely. But that that was by by design as part of the master site. So when that one comes in, we'll we'll definitely be looking at all of that. This one's a more basic crossing from the main thing.
Well, and I harp, I harp walkability, obviously.
Sure.
But in fairness to this particular project, it's surrounded on three sides, for all intents and purposes, by high-speed roads. And I think the majority of the pedestrian traffic that's going to come here is either going to come directly from across 900 East in the apartment complex that's over there, or the neighborhood to the to the west. And so I hate drive-throughs. We know that. But
On the record, it's hated.
Yeah, a few times. But in this particular case, it doesn't give me as heart as much heartburn as it does in some of the other ones, because they are doing things to make a pedestrian network that does connect both to 900 East and into the neighborhoods. And so I feel like we've handled that a little bit better in this project than maybe some of the other ones that we've seen.
I hope so. And then the ones going forward in the future, we hope to do the same thing. We need to be aware of that. It's great comments on the on the Taco Bell site tonight. Perfect. Anything else for staff?
Okay. Is any further discussion or I'll entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant design review and conditional use approval, permit approval for the application to allow the construction of a proposed commercial building on the property located at 4676 South 900 East, subject to conditions one through eight.
Is there a second on that motion? Was that you? Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Lowry to grant design review and conditional use permit approval for the application to allow the construction of a proposed commercial building on the property located 4676 South 9th East, subject to the eight conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, then we can take a vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nae?
Yes.
Commissioner Mckayvich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson? Oh, I already said that. I'm sorry. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion passes. So good luck with your next part of your project. Okay, just as a reminder, can the agenda item number seven is postponed. So we'll be moving on to agenda item number seven as number eight. So BMW of Murray Electronic Message Center is applicant here this evening. Okay, great. We will have our presentation by Susan Nixon.
Thank you. As stated, this is a conditional use application on behalf of BMW of Murray and Young Electric Sign Company. The property is located on 4700 South State in our CD zone. It's been there for a long time. There's an existing pole sign that has also been there for many, many years. The sign predates our current code. So it is what we consider legal nonconforming, meaning they can continue to maintain refurbish the existing sign, but with with keeping the main structure and integrity of the sign. So they wanted to keep that and have come up with a design to redesign the sign so that it could have a an EMC or Electronic Message Center. The existing site, you can see the pole sign there on State Street. They currently have about the same size sign. It's, oh, you know what, I'm going to go back. Let me go back to the very beginning. So you'll notice on the site plan, there's five parcels. And typically with a conditional use, we would require them to consolidate the parcels. But because, and they may not even know this, because the parcels are all in different taxing districts, and we cannot, there's no way for them to do it. The county will not allow us to do that because they need to have the different taxing districts. One of them is redevelopment agency, water sewer sometimes can kick that in, different sewer districts. So that will, it cannot be a condition for this property. They'll have to maintain it separate parcels. So, okay, so back to the sign. Based on the linear frontage of the site, they have 259 feet of linear frontage, feet of frontage on State Street. They're allowed up to 200 square feet. They are only asking for 135 square foot sign. The sign would be approximately 77 feet from the corner of Regal Street to the south, and it will have to be set back at least two feet from the front property line. And that's from the edge of the sign. So they kind of had to redesign their sign a couple of times to make it fit our code and to maintain the structure integrity of the pole sign. Also, the regulations for the signage, the sign cannot be higher than 35 feet. They're going to keep the same height, which is about 30 feet. The minimum clearance is minimum of eight feet, and they're approximately just over 20 feet. So EMCs have certain regulations, which is why it's a conditional use. It does have a little bit more criteria than the typical pole sign. It does. And I'm happy to review those if you'd like. They're in your staff report. And maybe some of the public would like to know. But all EMCs must have an automatic dimmer, so that after night, they can dim them. They also have to admit a certain maximum of camp, what we call foot candles. And they maintain the brightness. And there has to be a, the message has to be lighter for at least two seconds. And then when the sign is located with less than 300 feet with a residential zone, it does have to be dimmed after 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM the following morning. And this property is located 265 feet from a residence on Regal Street. So they will have to meet that additional requirement. The applicants have indicated that they will meet all the requirements of the EMC. And I think that we did send out notices to all the residents within 300 feet, did not get any commercial response on that. So based on that, staff is recommending approval for the EMC sign, subject to the three conditions as outlined. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you so much. If we could have the applicant come up and state your name and name and address for the record.
And I like long walks on the beach. My name is Rick Magnus with Yescosign, 1605 South Grammar C Road, here in Salt Lake City, Utah. We concur with staff recommendations. I'm here to answer any questions. I want to also express Susan is, you have a wonderful staff member, Susan. She has been wonderful to work with. And I just wanted to just give a public shout out.
On the record, Susan. Well deserved.
Extremely grateful for her and working with, of course, Murray. And I know that BMW is also, you know, they've been a longtime resident, if you will, here. They love their location. It serves them well. And of course, BMW represents technology and newness and everything. And so they look forward also to, you know, upgrading this sign and just, you know, bringing back vibrancy along and competing well with the others that are along State Street. So thank you so much. And I'm once again here to answer any questions you may have.
I think that maybe you already mentioned this, but you had an opportunity to review the conditions of approval and you can comply.
Staff recommendations, absolutely.
Wonderful. Are there any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will open this agenda item up for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment about this, you can come to the podium and state your name and address. Yeah.
Matt Liszby with BMW of Murray, here representing 4735 South State Street. Also want to second shout out that to Susan for helping us out, longtime friend of the dealership. But yeah, we want to say thanks to Yescosign and the city for helping us add a little bit of a newness to to that part of the city. Got to get a lot of old buildings around there. And I think it's kind of fun, especially with that new dealership that we have. We're really happy with that. And there's a lot of different things we had to jump through to have that that store. But we're grateful that we're able to have that sign as well. So
Great. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for a discussion or a motion.
Can I ask, Susan, do you drive a BMW? That's all.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction operation of electric message sign at the property addressed 4700 South State Street, subject to conditions one through three.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Wilson to approve a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of an electronic message center sign at the property address 4700 South State Street, subject to the three conditions. Is there a discussion on that motion? All right, then we can take a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Nae?
Yes.
Commissioner Mckayvich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks for being in Murray and good luck with your new electronic sign. It's gonna look great. All right. Our next agenda item is a conditional use permit for Orion Auto Sales. Is applicant here this evening? Yes, great. We will have presentation by staff.
So this is a conditional use permit for Orion Auto Sales. This is a small property on Fire Clay Avenue, just east of Main Street. The zoning on the property is CD zoning. To the west, we have the TOD zone that you're more familiar with, but this area is actually in the CD zone. The property is about, it's a 3,500 square foot parcel. The building that Orion Auto Sales would operate from is about 600 feet. They do use a portion of the property. So what you see on the site plan that the applicant has provided here is the 600-foot building and then the area of the larger lot that they lease for the auto sales. There's actually a home to the west here, and the back portion of the property is used for storage of vehicles associated with another business. We'll come back to this slide in just a moment, talk about that. Currently, they have cars displayed out in this, in this front area. That can be a little bit problematic, so we'll talk about that in just a moment as well as we go through the rest of the slides. But the building itself, the 600 square foot building is very simple. There's just a restroom and the rest of the building is open, has doors on two sides, windows, it's used for sales office. There's no plans to make any changes to the building and none are really required for this particular use. Again, I mentioned that only a part of the building is, or a part of the property is used for Orion Auto Sales. That's right here in red. The larger portion is used for other uses, and this is just looking across Fire Clay Avenue at the property. I want to use those pictures to talk about kind of the issues that we brought up in the staff report and make sure that those are clear. So with conditional use permits, we bring properties into compliance for different issues, parking, landscaping, et cetera. So I want to talk mainly about parking, landscaping, and improvements. Fire Clay Avenue in front of the property does not have any of the right-of-way improvements that are required. The city engineer has done his standard requirement, which is if there are some improvements to the property that have to be made in conjunction with the application that are more than $5,000, then the missing improvements need to be installed or damaged improvements need to be repaired. In this case, it would be missing improvements. That requirement only kicks in if the costs are more than $5,000. We have landscaping required, 10 feet of landscaping for the frontage minus the access points. And accesses for commercial properties are typically 30, 30 feet, 35 feet, at least 25 feet. So that landscaping is missing and should be required, less wherever there's an access, whether it would be on the north or the south side, or, sorry, the east or the west side of the property. We have, like I said, there's no, there's no right-of-way improvements to see the edge of the right-of-way. It just bleeds straight across from Fire Clay Avenue onto the property. However, to the east and west, there have been improvements installed recently, so we know the width that the engineering department is looking for. For the right-of-way, that can be matched very easily in the landscaping installed. So we are recommending as a condition of approval that the appropriate landscaping be installed. The other issue is parking. This property generates a parking requirement of three spaces. One of those spaces should be a handicap accessible ADA space, according to our parking regulations in Chapter 1772. Those are typically put by the building, so if those parking spaces can be striped, it's going to eliminate some of the display of vehicles as well. Imagining if it was on the south side, or, sorry, I'm gonna say south and north all day. If it was on the west side of the property or the east side of the property, depending on where they want to put the accesses, none of that is in place. So we'd have to look at all that with the engineering department as they prepare to make those kind of improvements, and they can decide where that would need to happen. It is a, it is a single property, so we'd be looking at that landscaping improvement for the, for the full property. Could have two accesses for that length, and then wherever the accesses are not taking up that space, we would calculate the requirement for the landscaping. So that is our recommendation. We are recommending approval if those conditions can be met. Again, I mentioned that engineering condition, condition number one, if those improvement costs exceed $5,000, then we need that curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Edison. Sorry, and that should say Fire Clay. I apologize. Appreciate you pointing that out in the pre-meeting. The project needs to comply with other codes for building and fire, and we'll need them to work with us to identify accesses and plan for that landscaping that's required and to stripe those parking stalls that are required as well. You have any questions for staff at this point?
I just need some clarification.
Sure.
It says on, in our paperwork, that there's 100 feet of frontage along Fire Clay Avenue with no right-of-way, but then when I'm looking at the site plan, it shows that their, the width of their lot is 45 feet?
Right. So you're not seeing their lot. You're seeing 45 feet of the frontage that they control for their lease when they, for Orion Auto. So.
So are they being bound by the 100-foot frontage or the 45 feet?
My recommendation is the 100 feet. This is, this is a single piece of property with no frontage improvements at all.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how we, you could, you can modify that. My recommendation is it's a single piece of property. The frontage improvements should be done. The access should be cleaned up. There's, currently it just bleeds across from Fire Clay. The landscaping being put in would harden that edge up and identify where those accesses are. That's better for everybody.
Agreed.
So I've recommended the 100 feet.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had it right in my head.
Typically, that's what we do with a space that goes in, for example, in a suite, in a multi-tenant building, for example. The frontage improvements have to be put in for that property with six tenants that are multi-tenant in a building. We don't just put it in front of the unit D or whatever it is. We do it on the frontage along the road. So that's how we've applied it here, too. But it's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for correcting me. I was thinking about something else when I said the name Orion. I said wrong. Okay.
I know Orion, too.
The center, so right now, as they have it laid out, they kind of have their access. You drive between those two, like, kind of rows of cars. But you're saying that that won't really work when they install their landscaping. They're gonna have to pick.
I don't think it will work because I'd have to see.
They would have to do an entrance. Okay, they'd have to make a plan about how they want their entrance to be and how they're going to landscape and come back and get it approved.
What they'd really need to do is plan for how to place the parking here, and then based on where they want to stripe the parking, cars will need to maneuver out of those parking spaces and back out to Fire Clay.
Okay.
So depending on how they want to arrange that parking, I don't see how you arrange that parking and maneuver. I guess you could do a center aisle and parking and then some vehicles displayed on either side, and then the parking here with some maneuverability. They just couldn't be displayed all the way back so that you can't park in the spaces and then.
Right.
You got 24 feet of backing space.
Okay.
That's gonna be shown somehow.
This is a tight little site.
This little area is, is pretty tight, and by the time you park three stalls there, get them appropriate maneuverability, there's not.
And landscape. Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Jake.
So they're applying for this conditional use permit. What are their, I guess maybe they can answer this, but they're already selling vehicles on this lot?
Yes.
And so if they do not do improvements to it, then all this stuff, this conditional, or all these conditions won't matter. Is that correct?
If the conditions can't be met, we won't be able to issue a license for them to operate there.
I mean, but if they don't do more than $5,000 worth of improvements?
If, if they don't do more than $5,000 worth of improvements, then, yeah, this is a good slide for it. If they don't, if the improvements that they're making, striping parking and putting in landscaping don't amount to more than $5,000, then the engineer's requirement to put in curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Fire Clay don't kick in.
Okay, so they still have to do the landscaping improvements regardless?
Regardless. Yes, exactly. That's a good question. Thanks for clarifying. But yeah, the landscaping would be separate from that. That's a different item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I guess I just feel obligated to say something because the topic of people operating without business license or operating outside the zones, given what topic that we're talking about comes up, and we always talk about reprimands or repercussion, what happens, how long have they been operating, and what's the consequences?
And I don't know. I don't know how long they've been in operation. I just know that we don't have a current license for them, and the only way to get a license is to get, we can't issue a license unless there's a conditional use permit.
And we want to give our residents benefit of doubt. Maybe they, it wasn't, not intentional, they didn't know the process, but I still acknowledge that.
And there is no real, and just to make it clear, and it's something we haven't talked about for a while, so it's a lot of new commissioners, too. There is no real, in the zoning code, there's no, there's no declared punishment for having operated outside of the zoning, unless you get cited for doing it again. Typically, the first thing that happens, the first instance is like a warning. It's a fix-it ticket is the term that gets thrown around. So they were put on notice, they need a license, can't get a license without the conditional use permit, so they've applied. And the penalty is only through the business licensing when they get, if they meet these conditions and get a license, they'll be penalized for 100% of the license. If the license is $300, they'll have to pay 600 to get it. And that's really the only penalty if they comply.
Are they allowed to continue operating prior to meeting all these conditions?
No, technically, no.
So they need to put the operation on hold until these conditions are met?
That's, that's usually through the code enforcement, and I'm not sure what they told them to do. I think they just told them to come and get a license and get a conditional use permit. So we'll have to, if the planning commission issues a conditional use permit and they can start meeting those conditions, typically code enforcement will let them operate while they're getting, while they're getting things met, but only if we're showing progress and moving forward. But we handle that through the code enforcement arm, so. Anything else? Okay, thanks, everybody.
All right, if we can have the applicant come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lana Band, 7194 Pine Corn Street, Cottonwood Heights.
Thank you so much for being here. Have you had a chance, I know the conditions are on the screen, but have you had a chance to review, oh, there they are, review the conditions of approval?
Yes, we have.
And you can comply with those?
Yes.
Great. Is there anything else you would like to tell us about your application?
I'm sorry?
No, that's okay.
And we're looking forward to working with Jared and Susan to improve the situation.
Great. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Okay, we will, do you have a public comment? Okay, yeah, we will open the public comment portion. Oh, you're with the applicant? Okay, yeah. Yeah, come up.
My name is Benz, Sergey Benz, and I've been in the business a long time. I was in Murray like 20 years. And the reason we moved there, because of the, I know these people a long time. And before we moved, it was very, very bad condition. It was just a pile of dirt, broken cars, and we kind of tried to improve property, but I cannot dump the money into the somebody else's property. And then we kind of like sit in the fence all the time, but we're gonna make a very good improvement, and we're gonna make a nice space.
Great.
That's what I want to say.
Yes, great, thank you.
And then the land is locked because behind, it's an RV place, it's a wall, and basically it's a mechanic shop and very hard to do anything over there unless like it's just a mechanic shop and then car business, something like that. I understand like how it should be, but not always work, like.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for that information.
I want to be honest.
Yes, we appreciate that information. That's helpful. Thank you so much for being here tonight. All right, I'm going to open that public comment portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak to this agenda item, if you would come up to the podium. And seeing no comments, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Can we have a quick comment discussion? Staff, just for discussion purposes, maintenance of the property, such as curb and gutter and things like that, is that always 100% the applicant, sometime the owner, always both?
Honestly, it's who's willing to do it, and many times it comes down to how much an applicant wants to stay in a property, how much improvement they're willing to put into it on behalf of a, of an owner who's unwilling, depending. And many times it comes down to being how badly an owner wants to keep a tenant. If they're good tenants, they can get some help usually, so that's where it comes down. Sometimes it's a joint, joint operation.
Good question. Hopefully, the property owner will help with these improvements. Any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a vehicle sales business of the property address 32 East Fire Clay, subject to the eight conditions that are, that are provided.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Go ahead. You got it.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry and a second by Commissioner Milkovich to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of vehicle sales business at the property address 32 East Fire Clay, subject to the eight conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
And Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you would indulge me for one second, I have to be excused at this point, so I'm gonna walk out, but it's not because I don't love everything that's happening.
You're not gonna stay for short-term rentals?
Zach's already mad about that. Actually, I can't, but I'll watch it later. And then before, fine, I probably won't, but, but I did want to say just before I go, we, I wanted to make sure you guys know, on the 25th of August, and Zach and Susan can fill you in better, too, at the end and give you better details, but the 25th next week, we're having an open house about the downtown potential development, and we'd love if any of you could come, so we just wanted to make sure we invited you. And friends you know, people that are around that want to know about it, if you can spread the word a bit, that would be great, and they'll give you the more details at the end of the meeting, okay?
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thanks for being here, everybody.
And your motion is approved. It passes, so good luck with your business, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys.
All right, our next agenda item, number nine? Are we on 10? Nine, 10? Murray Burton Acres Lot 37 and 38, a lot line adjustment is applicant here? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is for a boundary line adjustment between lots 37 and 38 of the Murray Burton Acres subdivision of what you've seen, a few little modifications on Afton and Bellevue recently, one just across the street recently. So Marley Kilcrease is the applicant. She actually lives in the home adjacent to these two properties, but has recently acquired them, and they are both in the R18 zone. They're rectangle, long rectangle, rectangular-shaped properties at 389 and 397 East Bellevue in R18. Couple of photos of the existing homes. The one on the left is the 389, and the one on the right is the 397. The bigger photo on the right is approximately where the boundary line is going to be adjusted. Her parents, I believe, previously had the, this, the properties and built quite a few structures on there. The original home on the 397 East, the original home was torn down in 1999, 97, and within a month, they took out a permit for the new one in order to maintain the footprint, which was nonconforming. So the home at 397 only has a five-foot setback from the west property line, and they could do that as long as it was within a one-year time period. So the request is to change the boundary line on this site plan where the green line is, that's where it is currently, where they, she wants to move it to, is where the red line is. So actually, this will correct an existing issue where you'll notice on the green line that the property line goes through an attached patio on the detached garage, so it will correct that. And basically, they're shifting just over 7,458 square feet, excuse me, 7,469 square feet from lot 38 to lot 37. Both lots far exceed the minimum of 8,000 square feet. They meet all the setbacks with one of the non-conforming side yard setbacks of the home. The detached garage also on the home at 389, the one on the left, is three feet from the side property line, but that does meet current zoning codes. Structures, dwellings are the ones that have to have larger setbacks. Typically, also, when there is a new subdivision that will be platted, we require new P U, public utility easements on all property lines. But due to the property line between the two homes, it makes it a little more difficult. However, the engineer is going to require them for the future. So the existing structures will actually encroach into that, but since they're existing, we'll just take that, you know, they're non-conforming, but anything in the future would have to be, cannot be built with those P UEs. So we'll have to have that on the plats, and that's one of the conditions of approval. So let's.
Does that include an expansion of one of the existing homes?
The non-conforming status?
Yeah.
They could, yes, good question. They can add on or expand as long, as long as they're, they don't go beyond that exterior wall. Say, for instance, they added on the back.
They can go as far back as.
If they maintain the exact same setbacks, that's, they're fine to do that. If they encroach anymore, they would have to apply for a variance, which they have to prove some kind of a hardship, and those are not so easy to get. So, good question, thank you. And that would go for any of the other structures that are non-conforming. Let's see, so I've covered everything here. I did check to make sure that all the structures on the property do not exceed the maximums allowed, and they do conform. Also, all of the structures, the detached garages, et cetera, all did obtain permits, which was awesome to find, I was happy to see that, so that's great. So with everything considered and reviewing the application, staff is recommending approval for this boundary line adjustment and plat amendment to lots 37 and 38 of the Murray Burton Acres subdivision with the three conditions as outlined. Happy to answer any questions or?
There was, in our packet, someone was worried about it affecting their back property line, and it doesn't, this isn't affecting that.
No, and I did call and talk to her, to Anastasia Vera, thank you for coming in on that. And she, it is not, it would not affect her in any way, so. But because we're required to send notices, a lot of times people think that it's gonna have an impact on them.
Okay.
It does not, so.
Any questions? All right. Thank you so much, Susan. If we can have the applicant come up, yes, and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Marley Kilcrees, and I live at 383 East Bellevue Avenue, right next door to these properties.
Perfect. Have you had a chance to review the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
And you'll be able to comply?
From the engineer, I've already sent it forward to our survey company.
Oh, perfect. And you can comply with all of those?
Yep.
Great. Is there any additional information you'd like to tell us about your application?
No, I don't have anything to add, but if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Great. Well, thank you for being with us. At this time, I'll open the public comment period for this application. If anyone would like to speak to the, make a public comment, you can do so. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. Make a motion, we approve the proposed subdivision amendment for the Murray Burton Acres, amending the boundary line between lots 37 and 38 for the properties addressed 389 and 397 East Bellevue Avenue, subject to conditions one through three.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nay and a second by Commissioner Malkovich to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Murray Burton Acres, amending the boundary line between lot 37 and lot 38 for the properties addressed 389 and 397 East Bellevue Avenue, subject to the three conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, we can take a vote.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Sheriff Patterson?
Yes. So motion is approved, and congratulations, and good luck with your project. Thanks so much for being with us. All right, we made it to our last item. Short-term rentals, I know, it's a long wait to get there, it'll be worth it, we're excited, Zach.
You guys super ready?
I'm so ready.
Are you ready? That's the question.
Awesome. Okay, so I'll just start off with, we are proposing that this is to be considered a text amendment for section 17.77. Reason for that is 17.78 are ADUs, and we want them close by each other. So for short-term rental ordinance. So why are we here? The city's received a number of requests to reevaluate the city's stance on short-term rentals. So through public comment, actually, it was, we have been researching this for over a year now, looking at other cities, looking at, which I believe is in your packet. I think I provided the cities that I've kind of looked at through the packet. So yeah, we've been, we've been crafting this for a while. I apologize, I should update it, the thing that we've been drafting this for eight months. We started at the beginning of the year drafting this, and now we've got it in a form that I think is ready to at least be considered by the planning commission at this point. So what are you guys deciding tonight? We are asking for a recommendation to the city council. The planning commission is reviewing the potential regulations and asking for comments, changes, and ultimately, hopefully, a recommendation to move on to the city council. So kind of a recap on what short-term rentals are. They're any dwelling or portion thereof that is available for use or is used for accommodations for less than 30 days. As you guys were aware, we did conduct a citizen survey back in December, December 10th until the end of the year, that with over 600 responses, it's a pretty good, that's a pretty good amount of people. So we were, we were really excited, included 12 questions, those were all, the results of that were in your packet as well. Hopefully, you read all 385.
Oh, they were interesting, yeah, interesting comments.
For sure. So let's, we'll take, start, dive right in. So in the proposed ordinance, there are three types of short-term rentals. We have hosted sharing, which means that the property owner stays on the site, and that then they rent out a portion of their dwelling, so like a bedroom or, you know, a section of their house. Not an accessory dwelling unit, mind you, we don't allow that. But a portion of their house, so just a bedroom or a couple bedrooms, things like that. We have unhosted sharing, which means that the property owner leaves the house, so they go stay in their home in St. George for the summer, just kidding, winter. You go to St. George for the winter. And you rent out your house, the entire portion of your house, up to 182 nights, I believe, is what we've, we've limited that to. Last, are dedicated vacation rentals, means the property owner does not live on the property whatsoever. So just give those, keep that in mind. We are proposing, not yet. I'll move on. We're proposing that, that those not be allowed in the city. We want some sort of homeowner accountability, whether they be on property at the time when the guest is there, or they're a majority of the time. So that brings us to owner occupancy. I kind of overwent, I went through that already, so. Hosted sharing means, actually, this goes into the number of nights. So owner occupancy, with the hosted sharing, we are proposing that they can rent out on short-term rental sites 365 nights a year. So they're able to do it as long as it's less than 30 days at a time. So it has to be that, otherwise, it's a long-term rental, which requires a different type of business license. Unhosted sharing, we are proposing up to 182 nights per year. This would allow for approximately six months. So they would have to show and prove that that is their primary residence, and that they live there 183 nights per year.
Zach, is this the time to ask you about that?
You are more than welcome to.
Because how are you possibly going to enforce if they are doing it 182 nights?
So there is software out there that, that we would, that we will be looking into as part of this. And it will be baked into the permit fees to obtain a short-term rental license. We've, we've had some demos from a couple companies that monitor, I believe, 30 or 40 short-term rental sites. You probably didn't even know there were that many out there. That, and they monitor how many nights per year an actual individual property is being listed. So how many nights they're listing.
So.
We get a report of that.
Okay, so this is totally separate than something, some code enforcement counting, oh, they stayed 183.
Correct.
Nights, and now we.
It's a version of code enforcement.
Right, but it's not, it's not burdening further code enforcement, it's another way.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have Mark sitting.
That's what, that's what, to put a number on, I'm like, I don't know how you enforce that.
Correct.
No, no, for further clarification, though, would Mark have to go to the program and look for these 20?
Or they send you a report?
It would, it would send out a report. That's, that's our, that's what we're expecting. So we've, we've had a couple presentations on, on software that does this, and then they provide a report to us saying such a.
How do they, how do they obtain the data? Is it scraped off of the websites based on reservations, or does it deposit it into their, into them? Or how do they, how does the data get delivered to them?
I don't know. That's, that's a tech question that I don't dare ask, because I wouldn't understand. I'm assuming that they do scrub the website, and it's scrubbing the website 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So it's not just looking like what we would do in code enforcement from eight to five. You know, where somebody could delist their site between eight and five, and then relist their home after five, when nobody's paying attention.
Is this a way that other places are trying to monitor how much people are?
Yes.
Are renting other places?
And do we, sorry, do we know, is it based on the nights you try to rent it out? Or is it based on the actual number of nights?
Try.
Yep, so when you say 182, that means you can only list it for 182 nights per year?
Yep, you can only list it for, only list for 182 nights a year. That, and, but at the same time, it doesn't matter what. So I mean, it could be from October to April.
I think that the challenge with that, though, is how comprehensive is that? There, there are football teams that do the same thing with their season ticket holders. And it, so it looks on, in that case, StubHub and others, but it doesn't look on like a local site like ksl.com. And so like, where are the gaps, where are the holes? There's other ways to market these things than other, just other ways, just on VRBO or HomeAway.
Right, exactly, and, and that was one of the, that's one, so I mean, on KSL, that would be harder, right? But there are.
But it, but it's, but there's still nights that it's rented out, so the neighbors are going, well, it's 10 months out of the year.
And we're not gonna be able to catch every single person on every single night, you know? But we're making sure that we do the most that we can.
I'd like to get into a macroeconomic discussion about what this will do. No, I'm very serious, to that, what this does to the, to the home prices in an area because of the, because of the cash, really, the money that it brings into that, into that, in that community. And if that's really a good thing for a community, because I personally don't think it is.
Along that same line of thought, why is it better to be able to rent your house every night, so turnover every day, versus a 60 days?
Well, the reason, because you can get more money per night, is, that's, that's why. But typically, this, where I've seen this be, okay, so I'm gonna fully disclose this. So I wrote the condo hotel mortgage loan program at Zions Bank, okay? A condo hotel is a, and I did it at the bank I write now too. A condo hotel is, is a condominium that's in a resort area. So the Montage in Park City is a good example, the St. Regis in Park City is a good example. A condo hotel, so, so when I, when I wrote that, when I wrote that loan policy, this, these are some of the elements. First thing, must be in a resort market. The reason for that is because a resort market is a geographically defined area where there is naturally an imbalance that will remain in place of supply and demand. If real estate is, is never going to get better, okay? The Montage that's down on Laguna Beach, there's only so much, there's only so much beachfront and Laguna Beach. And in, and because of that, real estate prices are super high. There's limited supply, demand is high, therefore, it justifies it in the long term. What we saw in the, what we saw, what we've seen in every single boom and bust, and we're in a boom, and it will bust, but what we've seen is in every single boom and bust, you, these pop-up and the booms, they work really well. But then in the areas where, where, or even, even in a resort community, so in the, in the Park City market, I'll back up. So it has to be a resort market. In addition to that, we actually put in a condition that, or put in, put in part of, part of the, part of the loan policy, loan guidelines, that it had to have covered parking. Why did we put in it had to have covered parking? The reason for it was because we wanted to be a true resort, okay? Because it, so, so we weren't lending to somebody's house in some dumpy condo somewhere. Because what will happen is when, the very, the very, the very first time that, wait, it's the very first time, but as the economy cools, the demand for these, for these rental properties will go down. And all of a sudden, people who bought real estate based upon thinking that they're gonna receive income from this, well, all of a sudden, the income isn't there. And now they're in a spot where they can't afford to make the payment, so we didn't want to lend it, we didn't want to lend the bank's money there. Okay, second, the second of all, if you do it in an area where there's not a natural, a resort area where there's not a natural, where supply and demand isn't out of whack, because, because there's a limited real estate, what will happen is developers who are smart, we had some here earlier today, are gonna come in. If there's money being made for a hotel, they'll build a hotel, okay? So St. George is a good example. We'll see what happens over the next 10, 15, 20 years. My bet, an area like St. George or Bear Lake, that right now, everyone's renting out their houses, the real estate's super high, my bet is people, is people are gonna come in and you're gonna see a proliferation of hotels. You're already seeing that in St. George, that will, and you're, and you're already seeing resorts, so they're going in down there, that were, that will pull people away from this. And I think that what you'll see is it will have a bad economic effect in the long run. So I think it's a short-term gain, but I think it opens up the door for long-term pain, especially in a, in a market like Mike Murray, where you're, you can still build a lot of hotels here. So you're gonna, so that's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt them. It's gonna, if, if there really is this, if there really is demand for this, okay? We have, we just talked about ShopCo, we just talked about that area. Who here wouldn't vote for a really nice hotel on ShopCo, in that, in that area, okay? Okay, but they're, they're the ones, I, I would, I would love to have something other than ShopCo.
Sure.
Okay, point of it is, there's plenty of developed land that, that can suck up that demand. And the second that happens, the person who bought that house, or did that remodel on that house, thinking they're gonna make, you know, 1,500 bucks a month, okay? Two nights ago, I had somebody tell me they made an absorbent amount of money on a, on a, on a, last month, on a, on a property in Destin, Florida. I mean, it was more than a lot of people make in a year, okay? That's great, I'm happy for that person. It's a, it's a, it's a, but it, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a resort location, and the market right now is out of balance, and we're having people who are wanna, who are asking about this, and I'm gonna come to my, I'm gonna stop in a second, but I obviously feel strongly. The market is out of balance because of COVID. We have technology that we, that's not reliable, that's not, that's not, that's not an institutional clearinghouse, where we mean, we know there's data integrity. And I think that we're in a boom of a market where there is, where Utah has been the beneficiary of people wanting to come here during COVID. They want to come, they want to go skiing, they want to do all these things. And I don't think this will be a great idea in the long term. So anyway, I've kind of said all my piece, I'm sorry for going off, but I have a bit of a background in it.
That's okay.
It's the whole point of your background.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can for sure have more further discussions. I just want to get back a little bit to this 182 nights. So when you get a report back from your software, and they are saying, oh, they are into 190 nights, it then does become a code enforcement issue of someone at the city contacting that person and saying that you're in violation.
So that's evidence that's worthy of evidence, so I guess for saying.
Right.
How do we, you know, if they come back and say, no, I didn't, where'd you get that?
We have that, we get that information.
And it's legal?
Showing, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you would then begin a violation process that you've laid out?
Which is outlined in the, in the ordinance as well.
But that also makes, I don't know, I kind of, in a less informed manner, I'm saying similar things. Why 182 days? It just seems like a whole lot of turnover for someone to make money, but is it beneficial to the community? I want our community to be able to prosper and afford to live here and have assistance when needed, but couldn't they get that sense just by renting their house out for a month or three months versus daily?
Six minutes.
Is somebody gonna answer that?
Let's have Sue interject and then Ned.
Oh, Ned.
Sue and then Ned.
I just have another question.
Okay, sure, let Sue go first.
Let me just ask for a point of clarification on the 182 nights per year. You said, at one point, you said they can rent it for 182 nights per year, and then at another point, you said they can list it for 182 nights per year.
I'm using those interchangeably.
So it's rent it, they can rent it for 100.
List it.
List it.
List it.
So they have to choose what part of the year they want to list their properties?
Not necessarily. I'm not, uh, we don't have that kind of manpower to, to make sure that they're listing-
But ideally, you're, you're saying you only want them to list it for six months of the year and then
Correct.
the other six months of the year.
They are living there.
They are living there.
Yes.
Okay, I was just thinking of like the, you know, somebody that's trying to supplement their income from letting people stay there.
People that want to supplement their income, and if they do it while they're living there, that's fine. Three hundred and sixty-five nights per year.
So that would be hosted sharing.
That's the hosted sharing.
Okay, that's, that's what I just needed to get straight in my head.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, did you have a question?
I do.
Yeah, go.
Thank you, miss.
I have a question too, so.
Ladies first.
Okay, so moving maybe a little bit forward about your standards and requirements. Um, you say that the property owner will not be able to be violating their CCNRs. If their CCNRs prohibit short-term rentals, I know that the city does not actually enforce CCNRs. So we are saying it is up to the homeowner to check with their HOA and see what their CCNRs are. And if they are in violation-
So they have to, my intent here is that when they are filling out an application packet that we typically give out for permits.
Right, and they have to come to the city.
An affidavit on it saying, I so-and-so have reviewed any, you know, covenants-
CCNRs, HOA.
Restrictions through my HOA and there are no, you know, conflicts with-
So if they're, if they don't do that and their HOA comes back and says, you're doing a short-term rental that's violating our CCNRs, then they are now in violation of that affidavit and have to stop renting it, or, okay?
And the HOA can also throw all their fines on-
They can get legally, like legally involved in it, right? But, okay.
Okay, Mr. Hacker.
So Jeremy, you're talking about, um, typically these would have to be in a recreation zone per se.
Resort, I think is what he said.
What I, I think, I think, I think probably a better way for me to say is the, 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 the projects that I've seen that have consistently worked well in all economic environments have been in high-demand resort areas. And the, and the, the, the properties themselves are, are, are a destination resort that people want to go to. They're, they are a true substitute for a resort or a hotel. And, and in boom times, and you, you'll see this work, you'll see this work in second and third-tier properties.
So, real question is, so how far into the valley uh, does, does the ski industry, um, really have an impact?
I can't answer that question.
And, and I have some experience, and that is, um, people that I know that come to town that wanna ski at multiple resorts, they stay in the valley. They go to Snow Basin, they go to Bird, Alta, I mean, they can go to multiple resorts versus staying at one resort. And, um, other than Park City, I mean, Alta has a few beds. Uh, Bird has a few more, but, uh, they definitely can't manage all of the skiers, uh, so.
I, I think if you, if you looked at occupancy, um, between, I would, I would, I would venture to guess if you looked at occupancy of, of the, of the hotels, um, excluding Sundance and the condo hotels in Park City, Solitude, which has a very, has, 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 has quite a few number, Snowbird has quite a few number, and the surrounding areas, I would venture to guess that there's very, very, very few times that they are, that they, that they are not, that, that, that they're, that, there, there, there's very few nights that they're a hundred percent occupied.
I will, I will, this is where my area expertise came in. In a former life, I was a hotel front desk person, um, here in the valley. And every single night, we were running at ninety-five percent occupancy between November until about April with skiers.
In the valley.
In the valley.
And that, that's my point, I guess, is it's a lot less expensive to, to stay in the valley than it does, is at a resort. And you have an opportunity, some people like the resort life, stay in one place, do that thing. Uh, and others, numbers, percents, I don't know, but others like to have that diversity of, of nightlife and going to different resorts.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, please.
What, uh, what years were you, were you working in that hotel?
Uh, two thousand nine to two thousand twelve.
Okay, and was, um, was that a hotel that was a, how would you describe that hotel? Was it, was it a resort? Was it, was it a nice hotel?
It was a Marriott, it was a, it was a medium scale. Okay, it was a residence-in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, that's, it's, it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting da, it's an interesting data point. Um, I, I, all I know is that the, the, the lenders that did, that did loans based in, based on second and third-tier properties, or second, third-tier locations, that they, whenever, whenever, whenever a, an, an economic cycle comes to an end and people stop traveling and it's a challenge, there were articles about this at the beginning of, of, of COVID. Um, the folks that were in those homes had a really tough, who bought those homes based on investment and speculation, had a very difficult time. And so I worry about, I worry, um, one of the, one of the, the key components of the Dodd-Frank, the Dodd-Frank Act, um, is it established the ability to repay standards for mortgage lending? And it said that, uh, if you, if you, if you go back and you, and you look, there's a chart that, that's out there that correlates, um, that correlates, uh, wages and home prices from two, from, from, from World War II through the, through, through, through two thousand and nine. And you see wages go up, home prices go up, wages go down, they go down. In the mid nineties, um, you see, you see it detached and home prices, home prices went sky-high and wages stayed where they were. And it was because state income loans, no-doc loans, liar loans came in, came into effect. And the price of homes became, became part of, it became based on sort of wages, it was, you know, speculation, hopes, wishes and dreams. Um, and so the thing that I worry about from a macroeconomic perspective for our city, microeconomic, I get that somebody's gonna get a little bit more money in. But from a, a macroeconomic perspective, if somebody, if people start relying on, on, on those funds, and so what the ATR standards do, the Larry Bay standards do, is they say, in order for a mortgage company to be able to give you a loan, that underwriter has to, with a reasonable certainty, um, sort of, they, they have to say that they believe that you can make your payment based on your income that you make or the assets that you have. So the money that you have coming into your home or the already, the already have. And they have to be able to, to say that for at least, for at least three years.
And I would say that, that just comes back to, to one of the main points, though, is that they would have to approve, they would have to be approved through that before-
But what this will do-
Lying for that.
Jeremy, I think one of the things we're running into is we're not bank, right? Like, we are not trying to set banking standards.
Hold on a second, though. But the point I'm making is if you, if we allow this, what that will do is it will create an influx of, of money into our, into, into the real estate of people who choose to do this, which will drive the values of homes up.
But based on-
Let me finish my point, okay? And, and if you do, it's, that's based on money supply. Okay, that's monetary policy. You, you, if there's more money, value, prices will go up, okay? With that happens, when that money was removed, well, it will happen, prices will go down. It will be a ba, it will be, it will, it has negative consequences.
And then I would just come back and, and also say that it's already happening in Murray as well. Um, it, this is, as part of that-
We're having short-term rentals.
Yeah, our short-term rentals are already happening in Murray. Um, those, those companies that we had, um, demos from, they have the data already. They have the data from Murray already. Uh, I believe there were, Susan, do you, was it, was it almost three hundred or was it almost two hundred? I think it was, I think it was a hundred and eighty. That number reads, comes out to my, it was close to two hundred. Um, it was a hundred and eighty-ish.
But now the law allows us to catch that and reprimand it.
Sorry?
But now the law's changed so that we can catch that and reprimand it.
If you, if we, if this ordinance-
No, but we, if we don't implement it, the law's now opened up so that we can get on those websites and tell those folks to stop.
Well, we can't go on the websites. We can't use the websites there.
Violations by people reporting a violation.
But didn't it change so that we can now search websites?
Only, only on ADUs. ADUs allows us, yeah, as long as they're not using an ADU for a short-term rental.
Okay, here's another question.
Sure.
Um, do we capture any sales tax revenue from Air, from Airbnb or VRBO? Because I had somebody call me during the week and ask me, um, about that question because they, um, wanna do a Airbnb and they said Airbnb charges a fee and collects sales tax. And they said, does Murray even see any of that sales tax or does VRBO keep it all?
Yes, we, we do.
So we will have a small capture.
And that's part of the issue with enforcement as well.
Right.
Why we have not gone after some in the past is because we are taking money from something that's running illegally.
So with this software, we stand a better chance of capturing sales tax because we'll have the report.
We go, yeah, if and when we go with, I mean, we have to have an ordinance in place first before I could do it.
But I'm just saying that it, that that opens up the door to some capture of sales tax revenue.
Yes.
It, you know, small or otherwise, it still opens the door so that we can maybe capture something that we've been, um, will slip through our fingers because we know people are doing Airbnb. We know people are doing short-term rentals. This gives us a way to regulate that and, um, you know, maybe, um-
Continue getting taxed.
Yeah.
Money from-
Because people are gonna do Airbnb one way or the other. I mean, because they are now. But this way, it, it gives us a regulation that allows us to permit and license the practice.
We know who's doing it.
And then we'll have software to track it. And if people overextend themselves, that's on them. That's not on the city anyway.
It, but it, but as, as, as the city has their, has, okay, you can send that same logic, are people doing other illegal activities? So should we just license and, and tax everything? I mean, that, it's, the fact that folks are doing it, no.
Taxes.
So, so, but, so the point of it is, 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 is there, there is that, there, there is an element, there is an element that, that, that the government, there, there is an element of, of, of what are the community standards, okay? And I, we haven't, we haven't talked about that yet, but I mean, the, the citizens of Murray overwhelmingly don't, the response said, no.
I, I don't think that's true. I think that a lot of comments are very in, in favor of it. And they were saying, a lot of the comments say, it's my house, it's my property. Why are you determining how I can rent it and how I, if I can use it as a short-term rental or not?
Well, then, then, then why do I need to get a building permit? It's my property. The same argument.
Well, then-
No, it's my property, I gotta do whatever I want then.
Well, that's exactly my point here, is that right now, we're telling them you absolutely cannot do short-term rentals.
No, I, I, I-
And this is-
But we're saying, now, we're saying, if you're gonna run a business from your personal property, we would like you to have a license to do so. Just like anybody that has a home-based business, you pay a permit and a fee and you get licensed every year to operate a business from your, from your home. And this gives us, you know, I mean, we've, we've seen this for years, you know, of things that have come through from people that said, oh, there's somebody running a party house on my street. I wish you guys would regulate Airbnb or VRBO vacation short-term rentals. We wish you guys would come up with an ordinance for that. And so that's why I think this is just, I mean, this is really well-written to do what we've been asked to do for, I don't know, quite a while since, since-
And in response to the public, the public is asking for this too.
Right, our, our constituents. And you'll get your chance.
I think it's, I, I think to me, it's a little unclear that when someone calls to complain about the party house down the street, are they asking us to close down the party or regulate the party? It's a little bit unclear to me at this, at this point. Because I think one neighbor on one side might be saying, can you just regulate that? The neighbor on the other side would be saying, could you close it down, please?
It's all spelled out in the ordinance.
Well, not closing it down, exactly. We're saying you can do it.
Yes, there is. If, if they violate the noise ordinance.
Mitigating the impact of a short-term rental.
What I mean by the residents saying, close it down, they might, that might be, I don't want it to rotate every night who's there. They like to just be a family there. So I think there's, I don't, I don't know. Just keep talking about how we're trying to regulate it, I think, because there's, there's strength to both sides of the argument, I think.
And if you notice, one of the things that they wrote into this that I thought was really great is that there are, there are consequences. And you, you can have your license to rent suspended for two years if you violate. And so it does kind of puts, you know, they're small teeth, but they are teeth into the ordinance.
Sue, I'm extremely torn. I really am personally not knowing which side I'm on, on this discussion. And part of it is because I love that there's teeth in it. I love that it's well-defined, but to be honest, I don't know what or how great we are at enforcement.
We, we're bad at enforcement. We've talked about that in this group a number of times and that we don't have enough code enforcement people to manage the issues we have today versus this, which I think changes a lot of the personality of the neighborhoods that everybody that comes to this meeting talks about, the great neighborhoods in Murray. And, and I think this really changes the, the, um, the feeling of those neighborhoods, even if the people living, renting, uh, short-term, um, B and B for whatever, one night, three, a week, maybe two, uh, even if they're good, good hosts to the property, it's still changing the neighborhood. People you don't know are now living across the street from you.
And so to me, the fact that we are already arguing so much since we've even gotten through it, makes me wonder if we, if we consider starting, making this step in Murray, if it should be hosted only if we're making that step. I don't know.
I could, I could give a hand to that.
Yeah, hosted only because then it does maintain the neighborhood feeling more likely.
That's okay. I was just gonna mention about the code enforcement. I, I think it's a, a little unfair to say we do a bad job in Murray about code enforcement. I don't think we're proactively going out and doing code enforcement. That's actually how I prefer it. I don't think we should be driving around giving out, you know, it's because someone's, you know-
You would if-
I'd write a dozen, a dozen a day.
If there are violations in your neighborhood, I'll guarantee you.
But I, I don't believe that we are not, um, when someone calls up about a code enforcement, I believe we're going out and checking on it. And I think if somebody has a short-term rental and the people are being loud, they're gonna call Murray City and Murray City will respond and then they will end up with one of these violations. So I think the fact that, I mean, I don't think it's an argument to say that we're not going to enforce it. It, how it's gonna be enforced is, my neighbor's being loud, I'm gonna call, Murray City's gonna respond. If Murray City wasn't responding, then I would completely agree. But I don't think we have instances where Murray City is not responding to a code, uh, a call about a code violation.
Maybe a call, but there's plenty of code violations out there that maybe we should be actively looking for and trying to fix.
Yeah, I would disagree. If it's not bugging my neighbors, then-
It's a city code. I mean, why?
Okay, but, but we are not talking about-
Well, it's, it's part of-
It is, it is part of it, yes, but-
We'll end up with.
Yes, exactly. And so I, I'm gonna kind of bring it back.
You have more slides, right?
Yeah, I do have more. I haven't even finished this presentation yet.
And I haven't even opened my mouth yet.
I know you haven't. Okay, so let's go-
Get another drink.
Let's move on to parking. Um, I'm sure this'll bring up a whole host of other things. So, um, every dwelling in, in the city requires at least two off-street parking spaces. So what we're recommending is that depending on the STR, so this would be part of the permit process, they have to tell us how many bedrooms that they're going to be renting out. And that's going to dictate how many parking they have. So for example, if there's a two-bedroom hosted sharing unit, meaning they're living on property, um, they're required to have two required spaces. And if they're renting out one bedroom, they have to have a point five units. But there's a minimum standard there of one. So if it's point five, you're required to have one additional space. And so looking down here at the, so there, that's renting one room. Second example here is a four-bedroom unhosted sharing. So they would be required to have the two off-street parking spaces that's required by the ordinance for single-family homes. And then, um, four bedrooms at half a space, that's two additional spaces. So they would have to have a total of four off-street parking spaces for, for a short-term rental at that. And it really doesn't matter either, either way, hosted sharing or non-hosted sharing. If it were four bedrooms that they were renting out, they'd still have to have those up to four additional spaces.
Can I still park on the street, though? It's public.
Yes, because it is public property, you are allowed to park on the street, but you are, but the host is required to designate those additional spaces for you to park.
So the host can park on the street and make the short-term, until people park in their garage.
Yes, that is correct. And, but it is public property, like Miss, by Commissioner Nay has said. So anyone can park on the street.
Okay.
So, um, just a couple other regulations that are of importance, urgent response. So, uh, they have to provide us with a contact, either them or the, a representative that's available three hundred and sixty-five days a year, all day, all night. 365 days a year, all day, all night, that, uh, is able to respond within one hour of our phone call. That's really important. That's, was pretty clear across all the standards anywhere. A name plate, this was actually suggested by our attorney's office.
Yeah, this is unusual.
Yeah.
I feel like I've stayed in lots of Airbnbs and I've never walked up to a door that has a name plate of how to contact.
It wouldn't be very big. Um, a maximum size of three inches by five inches. It's not big name plate, just something that shows the name of a contact person. So that if a neighbor is upset and it, for some reason doesn't get heard by the, by the city on time or something like that, has a way to go up to the door and has that contact information.
This would be outside of doors?
It is outside of doors. It's.
That's, I, that, okay.
Yeah.
That's, we'll make, yeah, talk about that.
And then noticing and posting, that's the information packet in, inside. Airbnb and other hosting sites already require a guest packet be provided. This is just the city requiring it as well.
They'll have to turn this guest packet into you.
Yeah, we need a copy of it. So now enforcement. Each, each day of operation constitutes a separate offense. So if they are running without a license, each night they're listing without a license is a separate offense. So your first is $500, second is 750, third is 750. And you are unable to pursue for two years getting a license. And the fourth is a misdemeanor with up to a thousand dollar fine. And I didn't write this, I didn't put this in here, but then you are banned from ever obtaining one in the city.
If you get a class B misdemeanor?
Yes.
And these, these can also be enforced by liens on the property, correct?
I don't recall. Brian, do you happen to remember? If I, I don't think.
The liens were maybe the ADUs?
I think the liens were the ADUs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we were doing. Yeah, we're not doing liens for, for that. Okay. Process to operate in a, a short-term rental. We are recommending a staff level approval. They'll have to provide an application and with, you know, the type of short-term rental they're operating, site plan, floor plan, a parking plan, specifically proof of owner occupancy, uh, which is dictated in this rental ordinance. And then, uh, proof of non-conflict with HOAs, which we talked about briefly a few minutes ago. So staff is recommending that the planning commission discuss this and maybe hopefully forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for, uh, the request to amend the Murray City land use ordinance, adding proposed chapter 17 dot seven, seven.
Can you go back a slide, please?
Of course.
So I, I know that this isn't going to be popular, but I'll say it anyways. This is one that I almost feel like, much like ADUs, originally we had to hear every single one before it finally got to the point where they became so routine that you guys took over them. I think it would be really important for the planning commission to hear these because that way we can hear the outcry that maybe comes from a controversial property or a property that has to fall into compliance. And I think that that gives us a better sense of what's really happening with it instead of waiting until problematic themes emerge and then you guys come back to us with a change in the code. I think it, it makes us a better informed body. Although I loathe the idea of hearing these like auto dealerships over in the, in the Garko properties. I mean, I, I think that's what it will become.
And I, I do understand your, your, your want to do that, um, to hear those. I, I just question the, the word I want to use is authenticity because as, as a public body, as an administrative action, you are obligated to say yes, regardless of public outcry or yes, with conditions.
With conditions.
And that's what, why we tried, at least I'm trying to help shield some of that from you guys having to hear the, you guys aren't listening to us. You, you were just approving this. This was a done deal before it even got to you.
It's a very fair point. It's a very fair point.
That's why I try to make, especially these administrative type approvals where you are obligated to say yes because they meet the conditions that, that's why I try to shield that. But I do understand you wanting to hear from them. Um, so that's where I'm kind of juggling.
I, I mean, I already feel like this process to be able to have a short-term rental is really extensive, honestly.
It's a lot of hoops.
It's a lot of hoops, like, yeah, I, I mean, I don't see someone jumping through all of these hoops and then coming, you know, back and saying, oh, nevermind.
The attestation that they have to sign, is that a one-time or is that each time they renew their business license that they would have to?
Sign.
The affidavit?
Yeah, the affidavit saying.
I would anticipate it's a once, once and done unless it's something that you want renewed yearly that we can, we can, this is the point to talk about that. Is that something you want to have reviewed yearly? That's definitely something we can.
I mean, I think, you know, you originally say, hey, look, I'm going to do this as a hosted and I'm going to, you know, live there 365. And then a year later you say, eh, I'm not going to do that. And you just never change your conditions because you've already signed the affidavit that said that you're going to do it hosted, even though you're living off in, you know.
Well, but they would then be in violation, right? And then you could start.
But who would know that the owner's not there? I mean,
I agree, an annual, annual affidavit with their renewal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm just saying, if you're changing from one to the other, you would probably have to come in and update your.
Yeah, you would have to amend it in some way.
You should. You should.
Same with lots of things, right? People are operating AEDs and not, you know, it's just if you're operating it under the way you're supposed to be doing it and get caught or don't get caught.
Can I add one thought to the discussion machine? So, um.
No, you can't.
Please.
No more thoughts. I'm just kidding. You're fine.
My max for the night?
Please.
Well, then I'm still going. Travis was stating earlier about, um, hold on a second. Oh, about the potential of putting this as some, um, something that comes before the planning commission. And then Maren's comment about, um, oh shoot, now I forgot. Dang it. It should come in front of the planning commission potentially and you said.
I don't know.
It's already a difficult process.
All right, thank you. Already a difficult process. And, and so why, it doesn't need to come before us because the applicant probably wouldn't complain or wouldn't. I think, but add to that conversation, bring it to the planning commission. We give the public a chance to comment on how it's working as a neighbor. And that might be of some value.
Would they be coming? They would be coming before, in the approval process, so not necessarily how it's working as a neighbor. They would be coming saying, I don't want this, but you don't know how it's actually happening or working out, right?
I mean, typically that's how it would work.
Except the ones that are already go.
Correct.
Operating right now.
If I, if I could make a suggestion, um, Zach, I think you've done a really great job putting together information. You've obviously studied this, so thank you for doing that. I don't think that, I don't have enough information. I, I obviously have a pretty strong bias. I don't have enough information to understand what the long-term impacts would be. When we have, when we have somebody who wants to build a pretty small, a relatively small subdivision, by, by many people's standards, certainly I think it's, but would be a smaller impact than a citywide change that anybody could, they go through some hoops, could rent, could do, could, could rent out their property. We require traffic studies. We require, we, we, we require a lot of, we require a lot of information from experts. I think that in order to really vet this, I mean, I, I think some type of, some type of, of data, some type of a study that, that, that shows in a comparative way, over a long-term period, a city, cities that are, that are similar to Murray, not just in the last year or two, but over a long period of time, what they, what, what, what made this decision? What impact did that have on, on their, on, on, on real estate values? What impact did it have on the neighborhoods? To Ned's point, this was a, this is a drastic change. I hate the idea of little placards on doors. I think that's just not attractive at all. Um, but you know, what, 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 what is it, what has it done to, you know, all the things that the naysayers will say? Well, you know, there's, there's going to bring, I read about, there's going to be drug houses, there'll be crime, yada, yada, yada. You know, what, when, instead of people's talking about colloquial, well, hey, you know, it worked really well for somebody. Well, why don't we, this has been around for long enough, is a big change. Why don't we get the information so we can make an informed decision? Maybe I'm wrong. You know, maybe, 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 maybe I'm wrong. Maybe over the last 10, 15, 20 years, the, the, you know, the, the, there's not enough, um, there's not enough money that your cash that gets generated from these to really dramatically impact, um, real estate values in a, in a city like Murray. Maybe I'm wrong. It certainly has in a city like St. George. It certainly has in, 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 in other cities. But maybe, maybe, maybe my bias is wrong. Why don't we all take a step back and, and get more information? So we make an informed decision.
I think part of the reason to potentially not do that is that I've, it, it's not that from a lack of trying. There's no data. There's, 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 there's no academic papers that are addressing it at this scale. They are looking at resort towns. They are looking at, um, rural areas. But in suburban areas, it's not, it hasn't been studied to that degree. It's what I've been looking at for the past year. I'm looking for these studies. I'm looking for this.
Then I guess my, my response is I don't want to be the taste, I don't want to be the test study. I don't want to be the test case. Let someone else, let's let someone else figure out if it's a good idea or not.
Which I don't think you are. We're not being a case study.
But if there's no predictive, if I can't look and say, this worked really well in, you know, there's a suburb of, 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 um, you know, in La Mesa, California, okay, which is relatively close to the beach. Housing is, is probably relatively close to the same, same, same average price as, as Murray. I would bet that, I would bet that you'd be, I bet, I would bet that you'd be somewhat similar priced for, for Airbnb. How's it worked? How's, how's it worked in a community like that? And then it's not, it's not right on the beach. How has it ebbed and flowed? You know, I would, I would want to know how, how it's worked in a, in a, in a similar type community.
Sure. And then also there's the second option is that we don't control, we don't control the budget. And in order to do a study like that, the city council would have to make that decision that they would want that study done. And they would have to appropriate those funds for a study to be done like that.
I mean, it's just my opinion, but I don't think I have enough information to make an informed decision.
Sue, what did you have?
Oh, um, I was just going to ask that. Um, I appreciated you including this, um, information that showed the cities that allow Airbnb. Did you happen to discuss this with this, with any of their planning departments or anything and just kind of get an impact?
Some of them I have. Um, a lot of them, um, especially North Salt Lake, where a lot of this code was generated from. Uh, that's where I originally took, I took from their code and then I worked from there. Has, has seen a positive effect. They've seen a lot of people come in and actually get permits. It, it is significantly different. Uh, their code is significantly different than what I've, what I've drafted here.
What, what about Sandy? A lot of people had comments about Sandy's recent adoption of short-term rentals and seemingly a lot of success.
I haven't had a conversation with them mostly because I, I fundamentally believed it would be way too much staff time to, on how they, they monitor it because it's, I don't know if it.
They have like six months, right?
Uh, no. So, well, they might. I, I apologize. I'm not, I haven't looked at that in, in a little bit, so. But there, they only issue a certain number of permits.
Yeah.
Per council district. Which is then you get put on a waitlist until it's done. Um, and verifying that, um, is staff time that I don't think we could dedicate. So I didn't reach out to them and actually have a full-on discussion with them.
So let me tell you some of my reservations with this, or probably my biggest reservation is that it, it's housing policy in general. And, you know, somewhat to Jeremy's point, this is taking what would normally be property that would be developed as accessory dwelling units and it's taking them off of the market. It is, it is deep, i- i- it's not doing anything to stabilize the neighborhood proper. So when I have a new person in every week, it's not somebody that lives in my community. It's, it's a different person every week that's coming to my community, visiting my community and leaving my community. And I think over long-term, what's going to solidify, um, opportunities for housing in this, in the city is not allowing that. It's allowing, it's allowing grandma to rent out half of her house to someone that's going to be there for six months or for a year or for two years. And, and I think that we take those opportunities away for short-term gain. You're going to make more money doing the short-term rentals, right? I get that. But I, I think that, that by having stable and consistent people in the neighborhood, that's what, that's what builds healthy neighborhoods. The, the turnover doesn't, doesn't add to that in any way, shape or form. And that's what I'm really struggling with.
I, I, I agree to a point. This, this is. We won't go there. So, um, it, it's, it's, I, I would say that you, you are right to a point, but you still have that stability of, if it's a, for example, if it's hosted sharing, you have somebody that's still living there. You still have your neighbor there, you know, that you can go to and talk to and say, hey, you know, what, you know, you have a lot going on here, you know? Technically you can, they could come, come back and say, well, it's my property. I'll do what I want. But at least in that instance, you still have kind of that stability. In unhosted sharing, it's a little less. And that's specifically why I have this, I have written out that dedicated vacation rentals, you know, where you have a vacant, a vacant owner, um, that's just not there, not allowed. I, I, because I think this is allowing, this proposal would allow for some people to supplement income or generate some income.
I think hosted sharing is a whole different conversation.
Yeah.
It's a whole different.
I agree. I agree.
Here's what I'm thinking at this point. I'm wondering if we want to table this and, um, have maybe set up a separate time when we can discuss this in more detail.
If that's definitely up to the commission, I would probably.
What, what, I, I guess I'm confused about what further information you'd be looking for from staff.
I, I have to say though, I agree a little bit. I like, I know I come into topics with my own personal feelings and opinion. And I try to set that aside when we get to the topic and look at the objective data. And I kind of, I, I mean, I don't think I'm perfect at that, but I attempt to. And I kind of wish we had a little bit more objective data at this point, just, um, like, for example, when the objective data, we have 600 people to apply to the survey, which is awesome. It's a huge survey for us. That's great. But at the same time, we're making a huge change potentially in our city as a whole of 50,000 people. Is that the 600 people that have already been renting out?
No, a lot of them were against it.
Is that the 600 people live next to the people renting out?
It's the 600 people that saw the survey and had an opinion and were, had a strong enough opinion that they felt like they should fill it out.
We genuinely, we marketed the survey and.
So here's just one example of data. I would like to have a bigger pool of residents participating in the feedback. It'd be nice to know.
They do know, they do know that this meeting was happening.
I know. We always let them know and we still get a small percentage of participation. I understand that. And I don't, I mean, it's a pie in the sky dream, but in like data on, do banks, when they offer you a loan, consider this an asset? And we'll consider renting, giving people larger loans for these houses that later they can't afford the house. You know, just a little more data numbers, you know? I, I do have some of the same reservations that have been expressed. I don't know.
That's entirely up to the commission on, on what they want to do.
I feel like you've done a very thorough job. I think you've, you've presented us with a fair amount of data. Now, is it hard academic data? No, but I, I also understand the struggles with trying to find that data. I mean, I feel like based on what we've read from the comments in here, we haven't done citizen comments yet, right? Clearly we, we, we ought to take the opportunity to at least hear what, what our one person here has to say on the subject.
And he's been waiting for hours.
But I feel like I have enough information and I feel like we've had enough debate and, and discussion on it. I feel like I, I could make a decision, but, but that's me. That's me.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on?
No.
Down again.
Yes, please.
The, I just had a question about occupancy load. I, I didn't, I didn't see it. Maybe I passed over.
Maybe I passed over it, but that's just based on the household itself.
That's correct.
So you could rent, you could, they could list it for as many occupants as the house is allowed to have living there.
Yeah, the fire marshal's not going to do an inspection on this and say you limit this number.
Fire marshal would probably have to do an inspection at the, at the building, or not building, but at the business license level.
So would they specify then the occupancy load? The fire marshal would specify.
It would be the fire marshal.
I see.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah, you can do a lot.
Yeah, I was going to say, you can put a lot of bunk beds in bedrooms. I've been looking at Airbnbs recently. You can put a lot of bunk beds.
But they do have to stipulate how many bedrooms they're going to be using for their short-term rentals. So they could say, I'm only renting out one bedroom. So then the fire marshal will come in and say, okay, you can have this many people in this bedroom.
But they could rent out their whole house and add extra bunk beds.
That's true.
Rent to a lot of people. Okay.
I just had a couple of comments real quick. I didn't find any studies or anything, but in my, my quick internet searches, a lot of these comments related to crime. And everything I found showed that crime did not increase.
Yeah, I had that question also.
No correlation.
No correla-, yeah. And, and it's very, everyone's, yeah, crime was really one of the most comments. I'm like, but it's not, how are you equating a short-term rental to increasing crime? It's hard to link.
I will just say real quickly, just as a side note, crime in the country in general is rising.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not-
And not just in Murray.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all crime, even violent crime.
Even violent crimes going up now.
Has, has been increasing. So.
Also, the, the things I looked at said that property maintenance usually increases on short-term rentals, so they're actually maintained better. And I think it's not fair to compare the rentals down in St. George that are not owner occupied at all to what we're, we're talking about now. That's, I think we're comparing apples and oranges. These are not going to be bought as investment properties. They may be partially used as an investment property, but from what I understand, this has to be their primary residence. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we have to, we'll verify that.
Okay, if the commission, I'm sorry, I'm not, sorry not to interrupt you, but, um, we can have further discussion, but I would like to open it up for our public comment. Just because he's been here and listened to all of our discussion. If there is anyone that would like to make a public comment, now is your chance. And thank you for being here and waiting through all of this.
Sue probably has a time limit for him though.
Pardon? Oh, how's the commission doing tonight? Uh, last time y'all talked about Airbnb, I think it was an informal topic. And, uh, Phil Markham, I think at the time.
Oh, sorry. Will you state your name and address for the record? Thank you so much.
Alexander Teemsma, 10 West Miller Street, District One. Yeah, like I was saying, the last time y'all talked about Airbnb and short-term rentals, it was a while ago, I believe. And I remember that it was summarily dismissed back when Phil Markham was on. I think I kind of chuckled and said, we can go back to this later. Very grateful for all the work you did though. Jeremy, it seems like you are my new adversary. We can be friends, but we can also have a difference of opinion. Or maybe we can prove each other's biases to be incorrect. And I appreciate that you want to seek out objective data as opposed to relying on anecdotal evidence. So it's very cool. Yeah, I'm very appreciative of the time that all of you are putting into this, especially Zach and Jared and Melinda, except that they're nowhere to be found tonight. I know that Zach has been working very hard on this and he has been periodically receiving emails or phone calls from me asking what's up. And he's been very patient and diligent. And I can say that the time and effort that he has put into this ordinance is more than adequate to provide the commission with all the information that they need to make what I feel would be an informed decision in the best interest of the city. If you look at the survey alone, I believe it was 59% of residents were in favor. And that would mean that 41% were not in favor of Airbnb in general. But for what it's worth, the majority of the city is in favor of Airbnb. And I am one of those who is in favor. I was operating an Airbnb out of my home with my wife. We bought the home because it lent itself very well to being a Airbnb short-term rental type property. It is a two-story, well, it has the first level and then the second level is a basement. And each floor has a living space, two bedrooms and a full bathroom. However, the upstairs has a kitchen and the downstairs does not. And the downstairs does have a separate entrance. But because of the layout, it wasn't especially conducive to us raising our family, which is why, full disclosure, we have listed our home and we're going to be moving after putting so much time into this. Now we are moving. But we saw the property and we bought it with the intent to do Airbnb and we did for a time until a neighbor filed an anonymous complaint to the city, which forced us to discontinue at the behest of code enforcement. And, I mean, that's fine because the law is written as it is right now to disallow Airbnb. I've heard lots of reasons for and against and, and talking about not passing this ordinance, I've heard reasons relating to macroeconomics, which are understandable. And I love listening to Planet Money and other NPR podcasts that deal with trends and such. But I think that there's a greater argument to be made in favor of passing this ordinance or sending a recommendation of approval to the council so that they can then pass it. Because as it stands, the state has a law that disallows municipalities from enforcing ordinances that disallow short-term rentals. Sorry, that was very verbose. So even though the city has an ordinance on the record that does not permit Airbnbs, the state has kind of tied the city's hands. And so right now, the city's ordinance is wholly, well, the policy in regards to the ordinance is wholly reactive. So as was the case with my wife and I, the city can only act on complaints that I receive from citizens. And I think that speaking to the point of being proactive in regards to enforcing ordinances, it would be even better if the city were proactive in putting forth standards and expectations for operating short-term rentals. So then residents who wish to do so have an understanding. And that would encourage transparency as opposed to just trying to fly under the radar. I know I've already gone over three minutes, but I hope you're okay with that. And I'd rather that we just throw Robert's Rules of Order out the window for tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I would love a question.
When you were, when you were using your, when you were doing the Airbnb, were you, were you, were you in the home?
Yes, yes. And so, I mean, the whole reason behind it is kind of like why the complaint was filed is convoluted. And I carry my own biases, but I can try and present what happened as objectively as possible if you care to know about this one situation. Okay, give me just a second. So we were trying to be good hosts, but also respectful neighbors. And so when we had started doing Airbnb, we went to the neighbors on our street, on either side of us and said what our intentions were. And we said, hey, you know, if there are any issues, we would love to know about it so that we can be proactive and take care of this and make sure that we're not disrupting you or causing you to have any sort of negative experience because of what we're doing, even though we're doing it on our property. We want to be respectful of our neighbors. And so, here we go. And so we were doing Airbnb for a few months. I think that was close to nine months. And there were no complaints that we received from our neighbors, nor were any complaints filed with the city until one of our guests who was staying with his children was showering and his child, who is non-verbal autistic, let himself out of the house and started going down the street. And so then our neighbor noticed that this child was unaccompanied and didn't recognize him. And so she thought that it would be in the child's best interest to restrain him so that they could try and find the parents, right? Which is totally reasonable. But she didn't know that he was non-verbal autistic. And so they called the police to let them know. And the police came and the report reads, here we go. The report from the police reads, "On August 26, 2018, I was dispatched to 6 West Miller Street on a found person. The complainant stated there was a small boy that would not talk walking around on the street. The boy's father, who lives next door, too redacted, as we know now, the boy didn't live there, he was staying as a guest of the Airbnb, came out and picked up his son. Redacted, redacted, stated, redacted, is now old enough to open doors and is becoming more adventurous. Redacted, stated, redacted, is on the autistic spectrum and is non-verbal. Redacted seemed to be in good health and in no danger. The child was returned, this case is closed." And so what happened is our neighbors began to use the verbiage that there was an issue where the police had to be called to kind of disparage us and make our Airbnb appear as though it was more of a nuisance than it actually was. And as a part of that incident, the child, who is non-verbal autistic, did bite her. And so she also says that she was attacked by a guest, which you can say that, but I think that's a misrepresentation of what actually happened. But that's ultimately aside from the point of why Airbnb should be allowed. That's just what happened in my one case, right? Do you have further questions?
Nope.
Okay, cool. So back into it. Airbnb, my big thing is that the city ought to set forth standards and expectations so that operators can then know what is expected of them. And I think that that would curb issues as well going forward. So if Airbnb operators know that they can rent out their property so that they can have an ancillary income, but they are not to do X, Y, and Z, then there would be less of a need for reactive enforcement because the expectation would have already been set. And so I'm very appreciative of the effort that Zach has put into the ordinance to be so detailed and thorough in regards to those expectations. And also the penalties are meant to dissuade anybody from operating outside of those expectations. And anybody who tries to skirt the need for a permit to begin with would still be required to pay those fines and then either fall into compliance or discontinue. There were a few points about enforceability. And the example that I would like to share is that of the IRS and income taxes. How does the government know when somebody is not paying their taxes? Somebody like you or I, because we don't have exorbitant incomes that would be audited randomly. The government relies on citizens to tattle on their neighbors if they are dodging taxes. And so, or maybe tattle is not the right word because that's a negative connotation. But if there were issues with the minutia of this ordinance and a resident that is operating their home as an Airbnb, if it's not bothering the neighbors, then so be it. But if it were bothering the neighbors, then of course they would take it to the city. And so you don't necessarily have to rely on code enforcement wholly. You would rely on the neighbors, who are the ones that are directly impacted by any negative consequences. Yes. As a part of the lack of feedback that you may have received from citizens and data, I personally printed off 300 flyers with a custom QR code and URL. And I taped those to the doors of single-family homes in my neighborhood. And I distributed just like a few to a couple of local businesses because I wanted to know what the response rate would be and if that would differ from what the efforts of the city in marketing the same survey. And my personalized QR code got six unique hits out of 300 flyers, which is a 2% response rate. So I, I feel that I was especially proactive in taking the issue to the literal doorsteps of the residents and making sure that they were aware that they could offer feedback. And even then, the vast majority were not interested in sharing. And I understand that maybe a few of those people could have already taken the survey using the non-specialized QR code. But most people, I suppose, don't care about something as allegedly controversial as short-term rentals. Yeah. Crime, I would just like to second what's been said, that short-term rentals don't result in an increase in crime in the neighborhoods where they are allowed or operated. And the truth is that the majority of violent and sexual crimes are perpetrated by people that the victim already knows, not total strangers. If people were worried about operating short-term rentals in areas where CCRs are enforced, I think that the stereotype that HOAs are generally very strict would hold true. And you would see that the HOAs would be even more effective than code enforcement in getting those short-term rentals shut down in quick fashion.
You've had so many good points, but do, are you, how are you coming?
Pardon?
How are you coming about wrapping up your comment?
Oh, sorry. I thought I had until 10 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
No, okay, I'll be brief.
Maybe, yeah.
Going forward, I'll be brief. Yeah, I just wanted to try and tie up any loose ends and ensure that you all know where I stand. I, I too want to get home because my wife and I, we have to catch up on Bachelor in Yes, so regarding Sandy, they operate, their Airbnbs or, or short-term rentals are strictly unshared hosting, where they do the 183 days of occupancy, 182 days of unoccupancy at most. And so I think that's part of why Sandy is such an anomaly. And I think that their code's very convoluted. If there were a desire to do it with unshared hosting in Murray, but keep the shared hosting, then I think that that would be a fair concession. Yes. Also, Travis, I think that you had made a point about ADUs being used as STRs when they could be used for long-term housing, six or 12-month leases or longer. I, correct me if I'm wrong. Am I right about that? Yeah. So I think that the ordinance disallows spaces that would qualify as ADUs as being used for STRs to begin with. So that would not take away from the long-term housing supply. It would be cases where a widow who is aging in place would be able to rent out a bedroom in her home to subsidize her fixed income. Or a young couple that's buying a home could rent out their basement that doesn't have a kitchen, they can't do an ADU to subsidize their mortgage on their first home so that they can save and buy a bigger home when they expand their family. Yeah, I think that I have come across sufficiently, although I do have more points. I think that, I would just like to close by saying that the biggest issue is that it's to save responsibilities, set expectations. And passing this ordinance would be a step in the right direction for enforceability, but also for negating the need for enforceability because operators would want to meet the standards that are being put forth. Thank you again for your time. I apologize for taking so much of it. But I'm very grateful for what you do, not only tonight, but, you know, every few weeks. And thank you, Zach, as well. Do any of you have questions for me? If not, I understand.
Any questions? Thank you so much for your comment and for your involvement in this and your participation here tonight. We're always grateful to have the public who is an active part of these meetings. That it really adds a great dynamic. So thanks so much.
Yes, absolutely. Also, really quick, I think that if we did allow Airbnb, I was a little bit confused about what you were saying about hotels, but Airbnb serves the same purposes as hotels. And so I'm not quite seeing how there would be an economic driver for incentivizing more hotels to build in Murray when the supply has already been increased by Airbnb.
Hotels are top of seeking enterprises and it's very easy to place if there is demand, they will fill it.
Yep. Right, but the demand would decrease because the supply would go up with the construction of Airbnb. We charge less.
All right.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ian.
I think we're, I know we're beating a dead horse a little bit, but I still have two little questions.
Yeah.
So, you know, I hope that Zach, you understand that I didn't misrepresent myself. I really do appreciate all the work you've put into this. It is, it is good work. Thank you.
I totally take offense to it.
Don't it?
Not at all.
I didn't mean to offend you.
No, I'm just kidding.
And then second, I'm still, I mean, I don't know if we're going to table it, if we're going to discuss it, or we're going to vote it. I still am much more comfortable with hosted than unhosted. And I'm still not sure that anybody's convinced me that being allowed to rent for 31 days is worse than being able to rent nightly. I mean, in theory, if we say you can't rent for less than 30 days, you can still make money, you can still supplement your income, you could still be tricky and rent it 12 days a month, then 12 days the next month, then 12 days, you could almost be, there's ways that, it's a loophole there, that you could almost be a bed and breakfast, but we don't have the same turnover that's concerning to the neighborhood. Tell me what's better about a one-night rental than a 30-day rental?
Well, it's not just limited to one night. People could do, Airbnb does allow you to do list for greater than one night.
So why is it better for the community that we're now saying you can rent it nightly?
We, I can't honestly, it's not necessarily...
It might be better for that one person.
It could be better for the one person and...
That's what I can't get past.
And...
I think it's almost impossible to have a short-term rental listed on VRBO if you're going to require a 14-day stay or a 31-day stay.
But the way to get around that loop is I know my city requires 31 days. So when I list it on a VM, and they rent it for four days, I don't rent it again for 31 days. And if the city comes to me and say, oh, yeah, I had one person here that month.
I don't know, I don't know if it's better or worse, it's just different, right?
And it's just a...
It's fulfilling a different...
And it's just allowing it for residents to, what I keep coming back to and what I have heard in the past from, because Alex is actually not the only person that I hear from consistently. And they say, well, it's my property, I should be able to do with it what I want.
So that time and time again in our packet. Did you close public comment?
Oh, yes. So I closed the public comment portion.
Sorry.
Thanks.
There you go.
Thanks, Travis.
I guess that's why I'm more comfortable...
I thought you did, but that's good to double check. It's okay.
So do we have to discuss exactly as it is? Or can we discuss hosted versus non-hosted, passing that, or?
Well, I think it'd be a total review. Yeah. Revision of the ordinance.
This is an entire text amendment. So if you don't like certain aspects of the text amendment, if you want things changed, this is the forum to do so.
I'm just happy they don't include drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs, nightly stays.
Until they do.
I do have a question. What if, I mean, would it be possible for us to take a vote on it as it stands? And then if that does not pass, then revise it and take a second vote on just allowing the owner, whatever it's called?
That's your prerogative as a commissioner. All you have to do is make a motion.
Yeah, it's, I mean, if we're ready to take a vote, I think, I, what I like about the ordinance as it is written is that it has addressed a lot of the concerns that the residents expressed in their survey. And it puts in place a lot of the main issues about any kind of, whether long-term rental or a short-term rental, right? Like, we run into the same problems. And so a lot of those main problems that anyone is going to have are addressed in this ordinance, which I feel like is one of the hurdles that we're running into as things currently stand. We don't have an ordinance, we don't have a way to enforce it, we don't have any of those things. What I like about short-term rentals, as someone who has used short-term rentals a lot, is the person that is renting is rated and vetted on those websites, and so is the property owner. So when I go and I rent one of those properties, I can see how many people have reviewed them. If you fill out information that says, yeah, that actually was clean, or it wasn't, or their property lived up to how they were advertising, or it wasn't, or those people that came and stayed actually destroyed my house, or they were good guests. So I don't feel like we are throwing the net out to any kind of person when we are renting through these short-term rental websites. There's a process to it that has some accountability to it. That was in a lot of the comments as well. I think short-term rentals are a different market than resort, than the resort market. They're two different worlds, and they serve two different purposes. And I personally like to stay in a place that is more of a neighborhood, that has more of a community feeling, that can house my whole family and have access to a kitchen, and is not necessarily in a hotel or in a resort area, for a much more affordable price. That is, if I'm going to go on vacation, that is what I'm going to look for when I'm looking for those things. And if we allow our residents the right to do that with their own property within the parameters of this ordinance, I don't see why we would be, as a whole city, I think there's going to be such a small percentage, actually, of people that are going to be renting on, of our 50,000 residents. I mean, it's going to be a small percentage of people that even choose to list their property. It's a lot of work, actually, to be a property rental on one of these websites. So I don't see why we would not allow the people that want to do it and are going to do it by the ordinance, and they're willing to go through that whole list of hoops that they're jumping through, let alone the whole list of hoops that any of those websites require of them also, and say, here's the parameters that we're saying that you can do it in, you have the right to do this to your own house and your own property if you follow what we've set forward. That seems like a reasonable expectation to me to ask of the citizens that want to do this. A lot of people don't want to do it.
Yeah.
I totally understand that. A lot of people don't think that it should happen. But what about the portion of people that do? And don't they have the same rights to be able to use it as they want to within the ways we've laid it out? That's my feeling.
If I could ask Madam Chair a question?
Yeah, yeah.
When you've used it, when you, and I've stated VRBO before as well, when you've used it, what's been the purpose of your, of staying in the, and going to the VRBO, going to the home or the, wherever you've stayed? What's been the purpose of your trip?
Well, I have used it for vacation trips. I know other people that use it for business trips. I know other people, I've had family that come in, came into town that wanted to stay close to me, so they would stay in an Airbnb versus staying in a hotel in some other place. There's multiple purposes, multiple what?
In Murray?
In Murray.
And so the, no, it was in Mill Creek. So the reason why, the reason why I bring that up is that goes back to my first point, which is the macroeconomic impact, which is that when the economy slows, it's a demonstrative fact, people tend to travel less. And so what that, in my opinion, and I think data would show, when that happens, the people who have, the people who are relying on that income from those, from those properties, it has a very disastrous impact on them.
We're not saying that everyone that's doing it is relying on that income. We're saying that there are people that maybe have auxiliary income and doing it. These are the property owners that are doing it. So how, I don't know how we decide, oh, you're relying on this income and using it as a secondary income or property.
Can I finish my point? So I'll finish, let me finish my point. So the point, the point I'm getting at is that we, is that if as a city, we allow for, our ordinances allows for, if they're, if they're, if in a boom time, there's, our ordinances allow for speculation, we will have a negative impact from that. Now, what I have pictured in my mind and what Alex did, really different things. Okay? And now it's time, sorry, what was your last name? Keemza?
Teams.
Teams. What? You can't, no, exactly. So Alex was an owner occupant, you were, you could have, you could have rented out your basement to somebody else, you lived in the home.
There's no kitchen downstairs.
No, but you, but you lived in the home.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're an owner occupant, you're living in the home, you're hosting it, right? That's a whole different scenario than, hey, half of the year, this can be, this, this, this is, this is, this is, this is, the owner isn't on the property, half the year, this can be, this can be rented out, okay? I think that all, I, I am a very, very, very strong advocate of property rights, of individual property rights, okay? But that being said, the argument, and Travis, you mentioned this, you know, people don't get to do whatever they want to do on their property because there has to be a benefit for the community at large. What Mr. Keemza was doing, look, I think, I commend you for stopping to do it, stopping doing it when you were asked to. That's a, that's a mile, that's miles of difference to me from somebody who has bought a home with the intent to capitalize on the ski industry and capitalize on the time that, and all, on all the renters that are going to come in, because in an economic downtime, that, those are the types of properties that will have problems. So that, the point I'm, the point I'm making is, the point I'm making is, when you went on that, when you, when you used it, it was for a vacation, that's great, it's an option for folks to do that. But I think that, I think that in our, in our community, if we, if we allowed for that on a broad basis, without any, without any restrictions, if it was unh, if it's unhosted, I think that it's, I personally think it's a bad public policy, and this is public policy.
So, so I think you've already told us, though, that the bank isn't going to loan them money based on this income, correct?
They won't.
Okay. So in theory, the banks already vetted them, and they should be able to pay their payment. But that said, I don't think that we should be making policy to keep people from making stupid decisions.
If you look at Fannie and Freddie guidelines, you may, you may have a problem. If you look at bank guidelines and what's warrantable and non-warrantable, you may have a challenge with your, with your loan, if your loan service, if you're...
I'm just saying, people do stupid things, and I don't think we need to be coming up with all the...
And if they abide by the ordinance...
I do them all the time.
Madam Chair, can I ask staff a question from my understanding? Because I'm still trying to weigh all these options, all this information. So I have friends who live in the East Coast and own a house here so they could come ski. And so they're, not Murray, but here three months out of the year, and the other nine months of the year, they want to do something with it. And I'm trying to understand how I'm restricting my neighbors' use of their land. So if, without the short-term rental, my neighbors could live here in the winter and then rent their house out the other six months for months at a time, right?
For a month at a time.
A month at a time.
31 days.
So the difference in what our existing ordinances are is now that person can rent them out to a different person every day?
In that example, no. They have to, that has to be their primary residence. So I can almost guarantee that the house here is not their primary residence if they're only here three months out of the year.
There's ways around that. The husband gets his license here, she keeps her license there.
You have to have your driver's license here. We have to see a utility bill to be on the record.
Just one time, though.
By our ordinance. One time, right now.
And he keeps the bills in his name and has his driver's license here, because when he goes back on the East Coast, they don't check. And there's ways around it, but yeah.
Of course. I mean, there's gonna, you're always going to have bad actors, and we can't, we shouldn't do policy on the worst possible outcome. We're doing it for the greatest number of good, for the greatest number of people.
I still think I'm somewhat comfortable with the hosted situation and less comfortable with unhosted. I'm just, there you go.
Okay, so my last question is, did you finish your presentation?
I did.
Did we interrupt you too much?
Yeah, we, nope, we got, I got the recommendation out.
Because I...
I spit it out, and then I sat down.
Because I kind of feel like we're at a point where maybe we should just take a vote and see where we're at.
Yeah, is there any, is there any further discussion, or are we ready for a motion?
Well, we'll see if we're ready for a motion.
Yes, yes. Let me, let me...
Let me reiterate that, too, that no matter, well, depending on how you vote, probably regardless of how you vote, it will be going to the city council. So, so if it's, if it's continued, it's not going to until you give us some direction on how you want things changed. If it's a, if a recommendation for approval or denial, it will go to the city council.
Okay.
And what if no motion's made?
Well, then we're here all night. Until motion's made.
There's no motion, it's considered a denial.
And so for clarification, too, if the motion doesn't coincide with, so if we make a motion to accept...
Well, you can, someone could make a motion to approve, and you don't have to vote for the approval, right? Or someone could make a motion to deny, and you don't have to vote to deny. You could vote against that motion. Or someone could make a motion to table it, or continue it.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny the recommendation to the city council for the request to amend Murray City land use adding proposal, Chapter 17.77, Short-Term Rentals, as presented in the staff report.
Okay, there's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
It's worthy of a vote, so I'll second it.
And a second?
So, yeah, just to clarify.
So this is, yeah.
Yes, a yes vote.
That was my whole...
A yes vote means...
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry and a second by Commissioner Nae to deny the recommendation to the city council for the request to amend the Murray City land use ordinance, adding proposed Chapter 17.77, Short-Term Rentals, as presented by the staff report. So when you vote on it, a yes vote is to approve.
It's to deny.
Is to deny.
Yes.
Okay.
So a yes vote is a no.
Yes.
And I'm sure...
Well, a yes vote is to deny.
And a no is yes.
And a no is yes.
Well, a no, a no means that...
You don't want to deny it.
That you don't want to deny it.
Want to deny.
Right.
But there's ways to amend the ordinance.
So, Madam Chair, for clarification, if the outcome of this is, so we're voting to deny, if we say yes, the vote's to deny, then it goes to the city council and...
With our denial.
Recommendation is denial, but they could still go either way.
They can vote on it also.
So that would, so just saying we deny it, which, in the topic, it goes on, if...
But with no revision or tabling or amendments?
So if we prefer further discussion, tabling or amendments?
We need another motion after this vote.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Nae?
Yes.
Let's see. Commissioner Wilson?
Can you come back to me in a minute?
Okay. Commissioner Pearson?
No.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Oh, lordy.
You better let me go first.
Yeah, let him go first.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Yes, that's three, oh, that doesn't make it easier.
Okay, so Commissioner Wilson, then.
Ah, shoot. No.
No.
Commissioner Milkovich?
So, just for clarification, so if I say, so a yes vote means we're denying it?
Correct.
And it goes along, we're done.
It's confusing.
A no vote means we're going to talk about more.
Probably, yes.
Or we, there could be no more motions, it just goes four as a no.
Wait, let's have Brian talk.
Explain what's happening.
You could make another motion if this is...
You could make another motion if it's...
Passed.
Right.
You've made a motion...
Okay.
To not make a recommendation...
Of approval.
To the city council of approval.
Okay.
That would go to the city council.
Okay.
So they would see your recommendation not to approve if that's how the vote goes. You know, this is at the point where whatever vote happens here, this will go to the city council.
This is it.
So if you wanted to table it, you should have made a motion before to say, let's table this. But you're in the middle of a motion right now, you're voting, so...
Can you explain?
That's the consequences of your vote.
Can you explain to me their, what their authority or their abilities is once it gets to them? Because if they get a denial from us, they can do the exact same thing and change it to something completely different and pass it.
They can do whatever they want.
So, just so I'm clear, so if we approve the denial of this, we cannot do another motion to approve it?
You could make another motion to change it to...
Not deny it.
Yes, you can.
But the motion didn't pass, so nothing passed.
We don't know yet, we're not done voting.
We're in the middle of voting.
I know, hypothetically.
To approve it as written.
Pass.
You could make a motion to change it, to amend it...
Motion doesn't pass, then nothing happened.
No, it still goes to the city council.
Right, because the way the motion was worded was...
Right. A motion to deny.
To deny. Right.
As written, as written.
But as a quorum, we did not approve that.
So I'm hypothetically, sorry, everything I'm saying is hypothetically, but if we did not approve the motion...
Right, if it gets denied to deny it...
Then a second motion could be made.
Yeah.
Correct.
If it gets voted down to deny it as written...
Then the motion didn't pass.
Then the motion didn't pass.
Then the motion doesn't pass.
But we could make a second motion of something different. I believe.
Is that your, is that your understanding?
Brian is going to have the say here.
You're earning your keep tonight, Brian.
Yep.
Cause we're not, we're not approving to forward anything to the City Council. We did not approve to forward anything to the City Council.
No, we denied.
Yeah, if we deny the denial.
If we deny the denial, we're not.
Too many double negatives.
This is why I need clarification of what I'm doing.
Yep.
Well.
Right, I think if you were to reconsider, it would have to be somebody that voted.
Against the denial.
In favor of the denial.
Right, in favor of the denial.
So, yes.
Okay.
If it's, if the vote is to deny and you want to reconsider.
Okay. I have good relations with my fellow commissioners.
Wait, we're in the middle of a vote, we can't change it.
Yeah.
We can't change it.
This point.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, he can't re-nave the motion. He can't say my motion, pull my motion from the table?
Can I withdraw my motion?
In the middle of a vote?
I don't know.
No, because I've asked that before.
Okay, where are we at?
Ms. Milkovich?
Oh lord, I'm still trying to figure this all out. Okay. I mean, okay, I'm gonna just talk through it for a second to make sure I'm understanding what I'm saying. I, I think at the moment I'm opposed to forwarding on as it is. I would like to have some further discussion. So if I say yes, then I'm denying this motion and it goes on the council and they have the further discussion.
They, they will, they will get your recommendation of denial.
And then they decide. They make changes or if, and if I say no here, then we can continue our discussion and potentially vote on a modified version amendment.
That's what I believe.
I think it has to pass.
Is that what you?
That's what I believe, but I want to make sure.
That's why.
Because the.
Nothing happened.
The motion fails.
Motion failed.
The motion fails.
Nothing happens, right.
Motion of a denial failed.
I just want to understand what I'm doing with my vote.
I, that's what I believe, is that if.
Um, I, I have a question for you if, if, and this, can I?
But he didn't read this. Oh, it's sure.
We, we have 11 topics, could a 12th topic be added, which would be a modification to the 12th topic? Does that make sense?
No, because it's not on the agenda.
On agenda, okay.
Lisa? Public has to be notified, so we could.
The motion was to deny.
To deny.
It was the opposite of this.
Forward.
But he did say forward a recommendation. You said forward a recommendation. Okay, so we are where we are. So whatever we vote gets forwarded to City Council.
Unless we, unless it gets denied, then it's, it didn't, the motion didn't.
Then we can do a new motion.
Right. The motion of the denial didn't pass.
Cause, cause motions fail, right?
Motion fail.
Motions can fail and you can.
And you can make another one.
So if we say yes, we're denying, we're forwarding on a motion of denial.
Well, let's, let's hear, let's hear from him to be sure.
Yes, please.
It's a really tricky spot to figure.
Making your money tonight, buddy.
Well, you know. Yeah, as I, as I heard, it was a motion to, to deny the recommendation of approval. Is that? Forward a recommendation?
It was to forward a recommendation of denial, right?
To forward a recommendation of denial was, was the motion, okay. So I mean, if, if it's voted, you know, if there's at least four yes votes to that, then there would be a, the recommendation of denial would be forwarded to the City Council.
And if there's four no votes.
And if it's a no, but.
The motion of denial doesn't fail.
Look at another motion because the.
Okay.
Okay. To get all on the same page, but that's.
Yeah, so then what I'm juggling here.
No, then we.
Just talk.
We can have a do-over.
And so what? So I guess, Mr. Farzour, but what I'm also juggling here is if I vote to deny, that would be four, and we're forwarding a recommendation of denial, what that in theory means is we're just ending the conversation and that the council have this conversation and make any modifications or votes they want. If we bring it back to us by saying no, that what we're saying is we're continuing our conversation. We don't know what the next move, moment, I mean, motion will be.
Correct.
Right? So we can just keep going. It might be something I like worse, better, something I like less and, and we.
Or something that gets tabled or something that gets amended.
So in my mind, it's whether we've said enough and that then listen to it, make a decision, or if we need to say more. It's basically what we're saying.
I think what we're saying is that you need to make a, you need to vote.
Okay.
You need to decide.
So. Okay. And, and that's, I guess that's where I'm at. I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, and Chair Patterson?
No.
Okay, so the yeas have it.
So of denial.
Yes.
Is being forwarded to the City Council.
Yes.
Of the whole ordinance.
Of the whole ordinance.
With no changes.
No changes.
Because they'll listen to all of our discussion, everything we said and have, take everything into consideration, right?
Not particularly.
No, is that presumptuous on my part?
Okay. Um, okay.
All right. Is there any further business?
Um, just, do you guys want more details on the open house on?
Yes, please.
Wednesday? Okay, so Edlin Company is bringing forward a proposal. The RDA has asked that they have a public open house. So this is before you guys see it, before anything, the RDA requested this. So it's gonna be, what? Not from what Moon told. Anyway, it doesn't matter. Somebody requested it and we are having an open house prior to having this public, you know, the public meetings and things for it. So please go, please attend, please tell your friends and family. It's, it's a multi-unit complex, it's for 48th and State.
Is that the 25th?
It is, it is 25th.
Six to eight PM?
Six to eight PM.
This is an open house, not a public meeting, correct?
It is not a, well, it is, it will be agendized as a public meeting because we anticipate that City Council people will be there.
But there will not be formal presentation.
Formal.
Or formal votes or anything like that.
Nothing like that, no. So yeah, that's, that's our.
So mostly informational?
It's all informational, it's for the public, it's to get feedback from the public on, on this proposal. There's no presenting, there's just boards. There'll be, there'll be boards. So, and all your favorite people will be there, like me and Susan and Jared and Melinda, so.
Luckily Bryant will get to avoid that one.
No voting.
Okay, any other questions or anything?
I, I have to say, I do feel a little bit bad, Jared, because I feel, Zach, sorry, because I feel like you put a lot of time in this and we kind of said, no, thank you. That, hopefully you didn't hear that. Hopefully you heard, we, we appreciate your time.
It doesn't mean no thank you, it means the City Council is going to.
Exactly, that's.
This is my job and you guys represent.
And also, you did a really great job on that ordinance.
You guys do represent the community.
It was very well-written.
So that's.
Much to their chagrin often.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 9:30. Nope, my phone says 9:30.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Meaning adjourned.
You're done.